All right, let's go live here. There it is. That's a softer sound. All right, good morning and welcome. Today is June 16th and welcome back, board members. We were here last night for a bit. And Mr. CEO, and welcome to your boardroom. It is the 16th of June and this is a meeting of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors. And here I have my cheat sheet. There it is. All right, let's do our roll call, please.
Supervisor Foye, Supervisor Parks, Supervisor Bennett, Supervisors Arico, and Supervisor Long.
Here. All right, let's then rise for pledges allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And Chief of Staff Martine Hernandez, would you lead us?
I pledge a hand of your heart. Ready to begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. All right, at this time we have our minutes from our June, our minutes, June 9th. I knew there was a date there. Thank you. Motion and a second. Please vote.
We don't have the ones from yesterday.
And those minutes are approved. Now we'll have agenda review. Mr. CEO.
Thank you Chair Long. Just a few items. Item 36, Public Works: Acquisition of Real Property for Mitigation of Certain Capital and Facility Repair Projects. A revised Exhibit 1 has been submitted.
That was 36?
36.
Thank you.
Item 51, Treasurer Tax Collector: Report of Investments for April 2015. A revised Exhibit 2 has been submitted. Item 63, Supervisor Parks: Resolution Establishing a Citizens Advisory Committee for Waterworks District Number 38 and Dissolution of Lake Sherwood Community Service District Advisory Committee. A revised board letter has been submitted. Yep, yep. Item 64, CEO's Office: Presentation by the California Department of Pesticide Regulation. A revised board letter has been submitted. In addition, on page, on Agenda Page 14, the Agenda title has been updated to include, provide additional direction to staff related to local pesticide air monitoring. Item 69, Supervisor Parks: Support the National Park Service Adoption of Alternative D for the Rim of the Valley Corridor Study. This item has been scheduled to be heard at 9:30 and Agenda Page 15 has been updated to reflect the scheduling change. In addition, 49 comment letters have been submitted. Item 73, GSA: Approval of Annual Service Agreements in Excess of $100,000. A revised board letter has been submitted. Then there's an addendum agenda. Item 78, County Council Approval of a Waiver of Conflict of Interest of Horvitz and Levy LLP. Finally, item 79, Health Care Agency: Approval of a Program Letter of Agreement for the Training of General Surgery Residents from Santa Barbara Cottage Hospital. And that's it.
All right, board members, anything else on the agenda review? Okay, let's have an action on the agenda as modified. There's motion and a second. All right, and that passes unanimously. Thank you. Now we're going to move ahead for our moment of inspiration. And I'm very pleased this morning to, I invited Pastor Johnny Flores of the Vineyard Church in Santa Paula. This is the week of Father's Day, although we celebrate Fathers year-round. But the most important thing a father can do is to love their mother. For his children is to love their mother. And the most important gift a father gives is to believe in those he loves. And it truly takes someone special to be a dad. Pastor Flores is the pastor of Vineyard Church in Santa Paula for 14 years and serves as Vice President of the Santa Paula Police Clergy Council. And he's been a resident of Santa Paula for 13 years, born and raised in Oxnard. His father was a field worker and his mom worked in a canary factory in Oxnard. And he, I invited Pastor Johnny and his wife, who is here with him, Margarita, of 37 years, because she, the two of them together coordinate a family affair, which is in Santa Paula, it's an outreach that benefits the needs of family and children. And they do a wonderful job and they're, and we'll hear a little bit about that this morning. Together, Pastor Johnny and his wife have three children and six grandchildren. Good morning and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you Supervisor Kathy Long. Hello, everybody.
Good morning.
I've been asked to say an inspirational word and it's difficult to inspire people that inspire us. So what can I say to inspire you? I want to talk a little bit about the people that have inspired me. Obviously, my parents, you know, who have played a huge role in helping me become the person that, that I am. Hopefully, it's a good person. But I want to say a few things about a family affair. And the person that probably inspires me more than anyone, that's my wife, who works tireless hours organizing this event. So I get a lot of inspiration from her. The idea behind a family affair was to do something for the community. The challenge was to do it for free, not charging for anything. And one of the things I've discovered is that there's a lot of good people, not only in the county, but also in Santa Paula. And I recall an interview that we gave to the County Star. And the reporter asked me, where do you get all these things? Your fundraising, your bicycles, you know, computers, you know, just free, free food. And the only answer I could come up with is, you know, there's a lot of good people that want to give. And I think what my wife has done is she's been able to, to pull all these different groups together, you know, church groups, the Santa Paula PD, the fire department, county health agencies, I mean, too many to list here, businesses. And, you know, I, what we wanted to do was, you know, being that we're a church, we didn't want to do a church service. We wanted to be the church that was serving. And so kind of a bit of a twist. And really, what has inspired us, I think, to put on this event was to just, you know, love God and love people and to share God's love in a way that's, that's practical and real. And, you know, it's just, it's just been great. It's taken on a life of its own. Now we have people calling us, hey, are you going to do that thing at Veterans Park? You're going to do a family affair. And, and so it's just, just been great. But really, again, I just, you know, I, I've got to just give so much credit to my wife, because she's the one that's behind it. I'm, I'm, I'm just her gopher. You know, I need you to do this. I need you to do that. And, you know, I've, I've just learned, for those of you who are married, I've just learned to say, okay, or yes. So thank you for, for having me. And, you know, I had the challenge of inspiring the, the kind of people that inspire us. So I hope that encourages you. There's some great things going on in our community. A family fair is just one event. In the last five years, we've just seen the community come together. You know, we've got a, a great police chief that we love. You know, we even have guys like Martine Hernandez that, you know, he inspires me because we go riding our motorbikes together. And that's a lot of fun. But again, thank you so much for, for having me. It, it's been a privilege to share some of the things that are going on in our community. And thank you for your support. There's county agencies that are coming out in droves and doing some great things, providing some great information and just some, some practical help for the city of Santa Paula. Again, thank you. God bless.
Thank you Pastor. Thank you. And thank you for providing this list of all the participants in the family affair.
That's a short list.
And we do see, we do see our county agencies and, and doing what they love to do, which is also serve the community. So thank you so very much for coming in this morning and have a wonderful Father's Day. Okay, board members, good. All right, thank you. Okay, that's a nice way to kick that off, huh? Okay, we're going to now do the consent agenda, 11 through 47, consent agenda. Anyone pulling anything off the consent? Any requests to do so?
I don't want to pull anything off, but I do want to make some comments on a few of them, so.
Okay, why don't we do that?
Okay, shall I go?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On item 22, this is the early intervention for prevention of psychosis. I'd point out that it currently serves several clients, but right now they're concentrating in the Camarillo, Fillmore, Ojai, Oxnard, Peru, Port Huaynimi, Santa Paula, Somas, and Ventura area. And this is a bit of a additional funding. And I'm just note that we want it out in the Canejo Valley and, and Simi Moore Park, I'm sure does too. So we're, we're waiting for it patiently, but we do, we'd like to see that. And I know it's planned to come. On item 29, this is a contract with ambulance service extension. And just realizing how we appreciate the recommendation and the hard work of the community volunteers who are on the Emergency Medical Services Advisory Committee. So I just wanted to thank them for that. Also, on item 26, this is some funding for residential primarily services for people with mental illness and some with severe mental illness. And I just note that hopefully this will be the last time that we will fund the Silmar one, because we're going to be moving forward with our own here in the county and looking forward to Horizon View opening, or at least we're certainly going to be working on building it this coming year. Item 35, I just wanted to comment, this is a public works contract for road repaving primarily in Las Poses, Mentu Park, and Casa Canejo area. And I just wanted to comment that it will extend the life of the pavement for approximately 10 years. So it just kind of gives you an idea when we talk about sidewalks and how we may do some grinding. It may be temporary, but sometimes the same thing with paving of roads, so we can do them together. And also on that item, it was nice to see that it's approximately 14% below the engineer's estimate. So it's nice to see that. So extra money potentially available for other things there. Item 36, and that's the last one, is regarding a purchase of some land over in the Simi Moore Park area, the wetland purchase, Royal Simi Restoration. It provides for a conservancy to eventually take it over, but first we're going to be doing some restoration and purchasing of that land. And this goes right with our strategic goal of putting aside open space lands through acquisition easements or donations. So it's nice to see that. Looks like a good project. And it makes up for other projects that Public Works has done throughout the county and does the restoration there. So it's nice to see. And that's my comments on those items.
Okay. Good things to highlight. Any other comments, board members, on the consent items? All right, let's have an action then on the consent items.
And ma'am, for the record, that also includes the addendum items number 78 and 79.
That, that is correct. Thank you. Okay, let's vote on that, please.
Okay.
Sure.
As Supervisor Parks, sorry, as Supervisor Parks suggested, just do want to highlight the item on the residency. I think it's a real feather in the cap of VCMC and the physicians and the quality of care. The Cottage Hospital is asking approach VCMC about having their surgical residents trained at our VCMC hospital. So congratulations.
Yes, thank you. That is excellent work. Thank you. All right, then the consent item agendas have been approved. Next, we have an opportunity for public comment. Anyone in the public wishing to speak to the board? Nope? Okay. All right, boy, moving right ahead. Board comments. Supervisor Arigo, so you want to go first?
Yes.
Okay.
I had a couple of items I'd like to report. We visited the California Strawberry Commission for a demonstration and educational tour of the strawberry fields over at Kualti Road in Camarillo. And that was to better understand, you know, the ag best practices that they have for applying fumigants and pesticides into the ground. And we met with those folks the other day. And also additionally, I attended the 117th Philippine Independence Day, flag raising over in, in the city of Oxnard, you know, had a couple hundred people there. This is an annual, 26 annual event that they have for the Filipino-Americans, Independence Day over. And, and one of the things that I mentioned to them, you know, that I hope you didn't mind that I mentioned our second-in-command Catherine Rodriguez, you know. And they were very appreciative, you know, they actually, she wasn't there. I thought she was there, you know, and she had a standing ovation. So Catherine, if you're listening to, you know, he had some applause over in Oxnard. And also, the Alpha Kappa, so already incorporated, reaching for the stars, we have individuals from Toronto County, from, from Westlake, from Thousand Oaks, and all the way to Ojai, and individuals that are 4.0s, that are going to be doctors and lawyers and so forth. So I give them some commendations. They, they were there in Oxnard at Room B at the Oxnard Library. So very, very smart individuals, you know. So that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Bennett?
Good morning. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of people on this list.
Me too.
Okay.
Had opportunity to talk with homeowners association at Faria Beach. They're very supportive of the great improvements that Caltrans is going to be making in terms of biking on that Pacific Coast Highway leading up to the Pacific Coast Trail there. So I wanted to pass it on to everybody that Caltrans is committed to repaving those, that area, and it's, it'll make biking even safer and more attractive as you bike up the coast of Ventura County. Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor Parks?
Thank you. I would like to first ask that we close now there. The individuals on this list, I'd like to call out particularly Betty Powell, because she was so involved in.
Many activities in our county. Betty Powell is involved with things from the Museum of Ventura County, the 40 Leaguers, the Saticoy Historical Society, Pleasant Valley Historical Society, Museum of Ventura County, Chair of the Council there in 1999. And just a very giving woman in our community. And I know she will be very much missed. And then also wanted to mention the father of our city council member in Thousand Oaks, Claudia Bill de la Peña, lost her father too. And I ask that we close in honor of him. And just activities over the, the last week, we're able to attend the Flag Day ceremony that the Eric Hubert Post in, VFW Post in Thousand Oaks puts on every year. It's nice to see even our, our Congresswoman show up to that one. And I think that will conclude my comments. I've got more for later.
Yeah, real quick, I'd just like to adjourn in memory of people on this list and say I do appreciate our budget meetings last night went well. And congratulations again, Mr. Powers, and look forward to a great year. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a list to submit to adjourn in memory of, and I'm going to call out one very special person who I've known for years. And that's William F. Cohagen, known as Bill. Bill was very active in our community. He served in the United States Army during World War II as a medical corpsman. And he was deeply involved in the community as a member of the Oxnard Lions Club and the Camarillo Noontime Rotary Club, where he was a past president. Bill achieved 46 of 47 years' perfect attendance at Rotary, which is just astounding. He was named a Paul Harris Fellow and, and very, very supportive, did many, many of our special projects in Rotary. And filling his shoes is going to be tough. He, he helped so much with our, the golf tournament and the, and the, and the annual program that we did with the middle school kids for, for a racing program, running, running trails. It'll come to me. Anyway, a good, good man. And Rotary will certainly miss him, as will the rest of the community. And then I just would, don't, don't want to forget this, but to wish everyone a wonderful Father's Day. And as I opened the comments, that the most important thing a father can do for his children is to love their mother. And the most important gift a father gives is to believe in those he loves. And it truly takes someone special to be a dad. So to all of you out there, have a wonderful Father's Day weekend. Yes.
Can I also just take a second to recognize a, a very hardworking county staff, Vijay Bemisetti. He's the one that helped our packet come together. We had, as you know, two big packets that had to go. And I believe the clerk of the board couldn't submit them till like 8:00 PM at night. We have almost 80 agenda items, plus yesterday's packet. And from what I understand, he was here till like 1:00 in the morning trying to get it all out, so we could have it 8:00 AM in the next morning. So just our appreciation for that extra hard work.
Thank you. Okay, anything else, board members, on board comments? All right, then CEO comments.
Thank you Chair Long. Thank you Chair Parks for mentioning Vijay. And he does it with great spirit and attitude too, along with John and, and Brian and his crew too. So just two things real quick. CSAC Challenge Awards, you know, for years we've been going to CSAC and Supervisor Long and the team. And hearing these other counties get these awards and so forth. So we started to submit more of our things and being recognized, which is nice. And two years ago, we had two submittals. Last year, five. This year, we have 11 submittals. So yeah, appreciate the department heads putting that together. It's IT, GSA, Healthcare Agency, HSA, Public Works, Treasurer Tax Collector, and RMA. So a real good broad section of departments putting those together. So. And then lastly, just wanted to recognize our new county HR director started, started yesterday, just, just a normal day here, short honeymoon, right? But we're excited to have Sean Atten here. And of course, he's, he's worked in the private sector, had leadership roles in both Riverside and LA County. And so we're excited that he's bringing that experience here to us. And of course, we did the formal background check, but our staff did the informal background check as well. And he got very high marks. So we're delighted to have you here, John.
Yes.
Thank you and good morning Chair Long and Supervisors and Mr. Powers. It's great to be here. I just want to thank you. It's a real honor to join the county family. And I look forward to meeting each one of you and getting to know you. And really, last night was an eye-opener. There's great work that has been done. And I look forward to building on that good work with you. Thank you.
Good, good. Well, thank you and welcome.
Thank you so much.
Welcome. Look forward to having a sit-down time with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? All right. Okay, board members, look at, we're moving right ahead. Let's go to our regular agenda then and get some things done before our time certens. First up is item 65, Healthcare Agency. Okay, we've got animal contracts, animal service, yay!
Yay! Gosh, I'm sorry. It came up really quick. I was expecting to be here almost all day. I'm really sorry. Next thing I know, I see we're up there, so.
You're starting to sound like Barry.
My points. My points.
Well, we got to everything else. First thing's 10 o'clock, so there you are.
Yes, clearly my boss, he might be rubbing off. So, good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors and Mr. Powers. For the record, my name is Tara Diller and I am the Director of Ventura County Animal Services. The item that you have before you today is to authorize agreements for the eight cities that we currently contract with. Some points of reference that I'd like to point out, the contracts were upwards to 31 years old. Upon my entering the organization, I was hoping that we could put this off for a while, so that it wouldn't take up as much of my time. However, once we started looking into the agreements, we soon realized that we were not receiving full cost recovery for the services that we were doing. Namely, the cities have only been paying for dogs for the past 31 years, not cats, not livestock, not wildlife, not the other species that, that come into the facility. Additionally, there was no cost recovery mechanism for the licensed canvassers that we were servicing the, the cities with. So we have been in communication with the cities since, since November of 2014. Each city council has adopted the agreements already. While some cities did see a cost increase, there were two cities that, that actually saw a reduction in cost, Simi Valley and Moore Park, Ventura. Yes, thank you. My goodness. And I just want to point out that this is not necessarily an increase in cost for the cities. Rather, it's a true reflection of services that we're providing for them and a true cost recovery mechanism for the county. Unfortunately, the majority of the cost increases were realized by Oxnard. Oxnard is 41% of our, of our intake. The, the city contracts were structured very similarly to the last contracts, in that we're looking at a percentage of species that come into the facility. So I'll do a quick breakdown, if you would like, of which cities saw an increase or the percentage. I think I, I, it would be easier for time's sake to go over the percentages for each city. Camarillo is currently 11% of our intake. Oxnard is 41%. And then the rest range between 10 and 11%. And, and our, our county being 12% of that intake. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have about these agreements.
Questions, board members?
Chair, you know, I just want to thank you for the good work that you're doing, the no-kill and so forth. But I have received personally from individuals thanking you for the excellent work that, that you do and your good, excellent PR that your staff has over at the, at the animal shelters. I just wanted to share that with you and I'm sure that with our CEO, you know. And I can't remember the name of the gentleman over at VCTC that he said, and I'm going to try and find his name. He says, whatever he can do to help you, he wants to help you because of the good work that you're doing.
Thank you. Please give him my phone number.
Commend you for that.
Thank you.
I think it's good work. I mean, some of these cities, I'm sure, are not in a position they wanted to pay more money, but you did a good job explaining what's happening, what's, what's required. And I think it's a service that they could do themselves, but it'd be a lot more expensive if they did it and probably would be quite the quality that you provide. So thanks for making that happen.
Thank you.
A question, just more for the narrative going forward with the cities and as we talk. So for example, the city of Oxnard provides, or produces 41% of the, of the animals that we do intake. But the city of Oxnard, even though we've now gone to the cost recovery program that we have, they're not paying 41% of the total costs of providing animal services in Ventura County, are they?
No, they're not. They're paying 41% of the sheltering and the medical costs.
Exactly. So, so the point for them is that if any of these cities decided to try to do this on their own, there were, there are all kinds of economies of scale that they are getting with their, with their paying 41% of, of just a portion of the cost, that it would be much more expensive for them to do it some other way. And I just wanted to clarify that as, as we adopt these, these new, new cost structures and for them to realize and for all of us to realize, it's, it's good for them to be able to, to capture these economies of scale.
Madam Chair, you know, I, I saw your presentation. You did an excellent job. And I think the city council understood what you were sharing, because one of the questions was how much was the cost per dog? And when you mentioned the, the number, you said, well, I think we'd better go back to the original contract that we had. But you did an excellent job. And I think the, the city council understood exactly what, what you were providing and the service that we are providing for, for the community of Oxnard.
Yeah, I would agree. I just want to note that we are working diligently with Oxnard, the staff, the city manager, to really start looking at ways that we can reduce the intake that are, that's coming in. We will be presenting next month on Community Cats, which is also known as Trap Neuter and Return. So the city has really welcomed us into their fold to help find a solution.
And they're, they're looking for options too, is one of the directions that was given.
So I just, I just wanted to finish up by saying that part of why you were successful is because of the fact that the city, I, cities, I think, believe they're really getting great value, because they're not only hooking up to animal services, but they're hooking up to an animal services program that now is able to really address the concerns of many people in their cities that want it to be a no-kill shelter, that want it to be the shelter. So my compliments to you and your staff for making it the kind of place people say, hey, that's good value for us to be there. And then to the CEO and to Barry for the support they gave budget-wise, so that it is an animal services that people didn't mind paying significant increases to, to stay a part of. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Just a quick comment. First of all, I just want to thank also Terry Yanez from our office for doing a lot of the fiscal data analysis, which I think helped build that credibility with the cities. I think we did have good discussion with the cities and I appreciate their support and understanding. We gave them a year to adjust to these increases. And yeah, nobody wants to pay more, but we appreciate their partnership. And we have pledged, and Tara has pledged to work with them to try to increase revenue and lower their costs. So positive all the way around. Thank you.
Thank you. You took the words right out of my mouth. I wanted to thank Terry Yanez, Mr. Powers, I wanted to thank Terry Yanez, Mr. Powers, and Barry Fisher for really working side-by-side with me throughout this journey, as I would call it.
Well, I would hope that we never fall behind or into a situation where, you know, we have contracts that become so outdated. And I like the fact that there will be the opportunity to do renewed contracts up to five successive periods of one year each so that there can be that check on it. And we've had this discussion, the board passed to have the ability to do mandatory spay and neuter with great support from the community and to be able to go into those communities that have the population of animals that come into our shelter and our goal to keep it no-kill, that we continue to reach out to them and build support that they, too, move in the same direction. Because it's, as Dr. Novy said so well, you've got to do something with the intake in order to do something with the end result. So good work on this. I know it's a lot of heavy lifting.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I also just, we realized that to keep it a no-kill shelter, it does cost a little bit more money, too. And so it's nice to see that the contracts are also some more money to help that cause. And I just, one thing, as you mentioned, the mandatory spay-neuter. Dr. Novy, now they have a Winnebago that they call a Winnespago that will go to Oxnard, and it's just amazing, I think. Like seventy thousand animals that they have spayed and neutered, so...
Sure would be good to get that city council on board with this, so...
Well, Madam Chair, they did bring this item to the city last month to start looking at adopting the mandatory spay-neuter ordinance. And there wasn't as much resistance as we expected.
Good.
So it's a conversation happening.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. And that passes unanimously. Again, thank you very much for all the hard work on that. Item sixty-six, Healthcare Agency, clinic contracts. Good morning, Mr. Raheau.
Chair Long, Supervisors, Mr. Powers, Joan Raheau, Deputy Director with the Healthcare Agency. I come before you today to seek your approval in updated contracts for the majority of our affiliated clinics. Through these twelve professional services operation agreements, we are able to provide sixty-five percent of the primary and specialty care in the ambulatory system. The main revision in these contracts is our quality measures, and we've revised those to reflect current measures the agency is graded on by insurance companies. There is a group of quality measures. They're called the Health Data Information Set, or HEATIS, measures that all insurance companies grade providers on. And high scores on these measures are critical to our own health plans accreditation with NCQA. And when ambulatory care seeks accreditation through NCQA with the Patient-Centered Medical Home Certification, high scores are essential. A couple of examples that I'm referring to for these measures are laboratory results for diabetic patients. They need to be below a certain measure. Addressing tobacco use and linking patients to tobacco sensation programs. Other measures that are specifically related to children. And the all-important access to care in a timely manner. Right now, Gold Coast Health Plan provides health coverage for one in two children in our county. And that has increased the number of children that we are seeing in our clinics. So we added some specific pediatric measures addressing certain types of visits in the third through six years of life. Unfortunately, after those first couple of years, sometimes parents aren't as interested in bringing their kids in, so we need to make sure the kids come in. And also developmental screenings, that those are conducted at all the appropriate times. With the increase in autism, we need to make sure all children are hitting their developmental Over time, clinical practice guidelines that we use in medicine evolve. And a good example of this is cholesterol screening. In our last set of contracts with the clinics, we utilized a cholesterol screening approach that was best practice at that time. That has now been sunsetted, so we needed to sunset our measure. We wouldn't want to hold our clinics to an outdated process. Also, in these contracts are the additions of the Mountain View Clinic in Simi Valley that opened in January, and Camarosa Springs Clinic in Camarillo, Mariposa Urgent Care, and Citrus Grove Clinic in Santa Paula, all of which that open next month. When all these locations are going fully, that'll be between sixteen and seventeen thousand patient visits annually. And the last item is, last week, we talked quite a bit about HERSA. And HERSA has some very specific naming conventions for all of our clinics, and funding comes in in that. So through the contracts, we've corrected naming conventions of the clinics to match HERSA. So we will be able to receive and distribute the funds under those names. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions? I just, it's really down in the weeds for HERSA to deal with naming of clinics.
It is Santa Paula West. It is not Santa Paula West Medical Group to them. So it is, they're very particular.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Questions, board members? All right, it's before the board. Motion and a second. Please vote.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And that passes. Human Services Agency, item sixty-seven, fourteen contracts regarding various entities.
Good morning, Chair Long, members of the board, Mr. Powers, Barry Zimmerman from the Human Services Agency. And what's before you today is the second set of contracts that we are renewing on an annual basis. Every contract has gone through procurement process, and these are renewals within the cycles of the contracts. There are fourteen contracts, a total of ten million dollars associated with it. The net county costs or the general fund in leveraging these contracts is only sixty-five thousand dollars associated with all the contracts being awarded. So federal, state, and realignment dollars are the primary funding sources for these contracts. They cover areas of child welfare, CalWorks, and the Workforce Investment Act. The largest contract here is the CalWorks. It's our CDR, Child Care Stage One, Child Care Services for CalWorks clients at six million dollars, which accounts for more than half of what's being proposed today. Right now, we have about six hundred and eighty children receiving childcare on a monthly basis in that program currently. So I'll pause for any questions that you may have on these contract renewals.
Questions, board members? Okay, we, I know that there's still a little arm wrestling going on up at the state over potential requests for additional childcare funds and...
Yes, childcare funds. There's some question on the expansion of Medi-Cal as well as the expansion of the CalWorks Housing Support Program that we were one of the twenty counties in the state to implement. The base funding's in the governor's budget to expand that to an year-long program and to meet our demand is still in question, so...
Okay. Okay, board members? It's before us for action. There is...
Who's recommended action?
Motion and a second.
All those contracts, a ton of work getting all those pulled together.
It is. And that passes. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, we have my item, item sixty-eight. Okay, board members, as I believe I, at the beginning of the year, mentioned that I would look to hold a meeting in the Third District as we take our show on the road. And so Santa Paula has been gracious in offering to host us on October thirteenth. And we will convene that meeting at 6:00 PM. And with that action, cancel the regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting for October twenty-seventh. And that, so the four items, as you can see in the board letter. First, we have to cancel the regularly scheduled meeting of the board at 8:30 AM, approve the scheduled meeting of the board on the same date, October thirteenth, at 6:00 PM in the city of Santa Paula, and have the clerk work with all the notifications, et cetera. And then cancel the regularly scheduled board meeting of October twenty-seventh. And that's my request, and I will put forward a motion for that action. There is a second. I do. Please vote. And that passes. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so sixty-nine is held until 9:30. Shall we do item seventy, Mr. CEO?
Yes.
Fifteen minutes.
Good morning, board members. Paul Dursey from the County Executive Office. Last night, we set the spending plan for next fiscal year. Today, we are hopefully wrapping up, from our standpoint, the current fiscal year with a number of budget adjustments. It's a number, most of the items are relatively routine. I'll just bring, point out a couple items that are a little bit larger. One, if you recall, last night, I pointed out that one of our post-preliminary adjustments was from accounting transactions relative to the realignment. And that's number two, is that exact same transaction for the current fiscal year. So we also had to do it for next fiscal year. So that's about five point one million dollars of these transactions. It's all revenue offset. It's just, like I said last night, accounting transaction. The other item is number three, and that's in regards to our annual, we take some money out of contingency to pay for termination and buy downs that went over budget this year. So we're just moving some money out of contingency into those. Those are the only two significant items. The rest are pretty much, you know, accounting bookkeeping items. So recommend those, approval of those items.
Questions, board members?
I do.
Okay.
Item number twelve on the list of items is providing funds to the district attorney.
Yes.
And did you want to comment on that?
Well, that's just, that's, basically, they get, the Harbor Department gets fees for these fines and forfeitures or fines from the, and they have to allocate those to the district attorney. So that's what they're doing in this regard.
Right. And in 2010, our board changed how that is funded. It used to go to the Fish and Game Commission. We have commissioners sitting on there. And in 2010, we changed it so unless there was, I think, forty-five thousand dollars in that fund, it would all first go to the DA. And as a result, I believe since 2010, the Fish and Game Commission has not had any funds to allocate. The programs that the Fish and Game Commission did allocate to were really beneficial programs, I think. They really helped in the education of our youth. I know of school garden projects. I know of a middle school that planted a drought-resistant garden and oak trees. It just, that money went a long way into a lot of the different communities, and I think really had a lasting benefit. And to see now that we tried it, and we have found that that basically eviscerates the Fish and Game Commission's responsibility, which was helping to allocate those grant funds and ended a program that I think was beneficial to the community. I would like to see that we revisit that. I know this isn't the time to do it. I don't believe we can at this point. But I would like to be able to revisit that because I think it's a valuable program. And I'm correct, this isn't something we could do at this point. We've already made it a policy to do that.
That's correct. I think the overall policy would have to be changed at this point in time.
Right.
Yeah, well, I would ask that we bring that back for reconsideration, that policy, now knowing that, what the impact is.
Well, Supervisor, I probably would need to bring a board letter forward to ask if that takes place.
Correct.
And I'd want to revisit the action we took in 2010 because I know we had a lot of discussion about it. And, yeah, but that's, that's...
So just kind of bringing that up now as we, as we're reminded how we lost a very good program, I think, as a result.
Okay. Any other questions on this item, board members? And it's before us for action. We have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that is passes unanimously with that comments by Supervisor. Thank you. All right, item seventy-one.
Thank you. I'm back again. Thank you, board members. We are asking on this one that your board approve the local agreement between the County of Ventura and the Regents of the University of California for the University of California Cooperative Extension Program effective June sixteenth, 2015. We're talking about, you know, Animal Reg was talking about their thirty-one-year-old agreements. They have nothing on this one because...
Mr. Dursey, we're on seventy-one first, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I was going to jump there.
No, you were just...
I was so excited to try to get down.
You were trying to get out of here, we know.
He was just trying to lean the process. That's good. I like it.
We'll get to you, we promise, before nine-thirty, before ten. Okay.
Hi, good morning, members of the board, Chair Long and CEO Powers. My name is Lisa Yoshimura, and I'm with the CEO's office, the HR Division. I'm here to represent board agenda item number seventy-one, whereby we are requesting your approval on three items. The first item is a resolution whereby we are recommending establishment of one classification called Public Information Officer. The proposed classification will more accurately reflect and define the work performed by the position. As establishment of this classification reflects the title change only and the salary range will remain the same as the position's current classification of Program Management Analyst, there is no additional cost associated with this action. We are also recommending that the proposed classification be aligned with the Program Management Analyst for purposes of the market-based adjustment. The classification is scheduled to receive a market-based adjustment of one point six-three percent effective June twenty-one of this year and June nineteen of next year. The resolution also requests the deletion of ten management classifications that are no longer being used within the county. The second item seeks your approval to provide a market-based adjustment of one point six-three percent on June twenty-first of this year and June nineteen of next year for the Classification Retirement Chief Operations Officer. Last September, your board approved a resolution to establish, among other things, the Classification Retirement Chief Operations Officer. Although it was intended at the time that the classification be aligned with the Program Management Analyst classification for purposes of the market-based adjustment, we inadvertently omitted this request when the classification was established. The cost associated with this is approximately two thousand dollars per year. The third and last item requests your approval to revise Exhibit One of the management resolution to include a monthly car allowance of three hundred and fifty dollars for the new Classification Public Information Officer. The basis for this request is the frequent and regular travel that is going to be required of the incumbent, both during and outside of regular business hours. The annual cost for the allowance is four thousand two hundred dollars. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions, board members? I don't have any questions. Okay. Any public requests to speak on this? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
I'm so tired of hearing of seventy-two.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Again, lots of work in one item. Appreciate the...
Well...
Yes, please.
I just want to recognize Lisa for presenting. I'm glad she presented this. Just, you don't get to see her much, but she is a class and compensation specialist. So we really appreciate the work you and your team do.
Oh, thank you.
So thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
And I almost didn't let her get up here.
Yeah, well, you'll hear about that later.
Yeah.
Okay. So that passed unanimously. Now, we're on to item seventy-two.
Thank you. Again, Paul Dursey from the County Executive Office. We are asking, oh, boy, we're asking your approval on the agreement between the County of Ventura and the University of California. And like I was pointing out, that Animal Reg was talking about their thirty-one-year-old agreements. This one goes back before I was born, actually, so we know it's a pretty old agreement. So, yeah, a long time ago.
Let's not be ancient up here.
So we decided it's time to update the contract. I think some of the terminology they were using in the old ones, such as stenographers and those types of things, we need to update those. But basically, by the way, we have Chris Smith here from the University of California Cooperative Extension, the Farm Advisor. And we've worked together with Chris, developing this contract. Primarily, we're going to be providing three hundred thousand dollars a year toward their, all their services they provide. And they do provide a myriad of services for the county of Ventura residents in the form of educational and applied research programs. in, in the form of educational and applied research programs, and what they do is, is they have the Faulkner Research Unit out there, and they do a lot of work with the farm, farmers and, and the actual residents of the county, so we are providing not to exceed $300,000 in this regard, and we basically are providing office space and services for them, and then we will give them cash balance if there's, there's unused balance up to the $300,000.
Mr. Dursey, could you, could you refresh us, how much have we provided for them the last three or four years?
Around that dollar amount, it's a little bit more than that, actually, we had a little bit larger budget, but they, they've drawn down, but over the years, they've reduced their staffing level. We provided staff in the past, and they were down to just a couple staffs, so we'd actually be spending a little bit less, about right around that number, so we tried to negotiate about what we are spending currently with what the amount that would be going, going forward in cap at that dollar amount, right? And they, they do provide a great service, they have, I don't know how many advisors do you have in the area?
He has a public speaking request.
Oh, perfect. Then I will request your board approval on that, and here for any questions, and-
Great, thank you, Mr. Dursey. Mr. Smith, Dr. Smith.
I must say, I share Paul's exuberance in trying to get this MOU passed. Good morning, Board members. My, my name is Christopher Smith, I'm Director of University of California Cooperative Extension of Ventura County, as well as the Hanson Agricultural Research and Extension Center out in Santa Paula. The University is looking, of California is looking forward to continue partnership with the, the county of Ventura. The MOU, for your consideration this afternoon, replaces, as Paul mentioned, the MOU that was put in action long before I was born, and I'm no spring chicken. Although the agriculture, although agriculture on paper in the county accounts for only 3% of the county's GDP, I wanted to put a different qualitative aspect to that. Agriculture in this county touches every facet of our lives in Ventura, and I mean our quality of life. Look at it this way, the green space we having, that we enjoy in the county is a direct result of active agriculture. Without agriculture, a majority of the landscape would revert to a brown barren sagebrush landscape. Think of the, the brown fallow fields in Central Valley, they're all becoming too commonplace. To preserve agriculture, the University of California is making new investments in the county. This past year, we've added a new advisor in soil and water nutrition, and will be hiring a rangeland and livestock advisor next year. So, this will bring up our total count to about seven advisors, and so this is about, this is unusual for a county to have this many advisors. In addition, we've just hired a new education specialist and a water soil technician to our, to our staff. And we are in the process of purchasing almost a half million in research and diagnostic equipments for UC advisors in the county, thanks largely in part to the Thelma Hanson Fund. UC Ag Advisors continue to assist the ag community in providing device assistance in plant cultivation and diagnostics and in research, and I want to highlight two things. One, this fall will be in concert with Brett Chandler and Associate Secretary in Santa Paula, will be beginning an alternate host cultivation and collection project for Tamarixia radiata, which is a predatory wasp for ACP, which has become a big problem in the county. And going back to what John, I know we've, in the media with fumigants and strawberries, I want to mention that the University of California, especially here, Oleg Dogovich, one of our advisors is, has ongoing studies researching what we call ASD, anaerobic soil disinfection. So, it's a, it's a new way of, of fumigating soil before they plant, using non-traditional chemicals, so non-traditional chemical fumigation. So, this is the kind of stuff we really want around schools and areas where there's a lot of-
Christopher, what kind of material is that, what type of-
It's called ASD, anaerobic soil disinfection, but they can use, but the, the issue is what kind of carbon sources do you do, do you put into the soil to really get the anaerobosis? Essentially, it's without air, anaerobic, and it's very effective, it's a question, it's how do you get that? So, there's research, ongoing research with that. The Strawberry Commission is aware of this, matter of fact, they're funding part of this research effort.
Chris, I know-
Our education outreach and training group continues to serve our K-12 students lately in concert with Ventura Unified and Caneo School Districts with our foreigner school programs. We are hosting two sessions of our annual ag summer camp this, starting next week, thanks in part to the city of Ventura for buying some staff for this program. And I'm hoping that we can expand this summer camp program to an eight to 10-week ag school over the course of the next few years, so hopefully there'll be a, a summer school program in agriculture for the, for county residents, for county children. Our Master Gardener program has been a significant force in water conservation in the county through their extensive water-wise public education programs. In addition, over 40 people completed our extensive ag, Master Gardener Training Program this year, and are now part of our four, 240-plus Master Gardeners in, throughout the county, in each and every one of the districts in the county. So, the MOU before you will codify a UC county collaboration for, for the next decade, a decade that is likely to see a major changes in the practice of agriculture, and the commodities that are grown in the county, and in the facilities and expertise that are enlisted to help our growers, farmers, and ranchers survive in the global economy and in an ever-changing global climate.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, Board members, questions of Dr. Smith?
I appreciate you, it's a great scope of things that you provide and the wonderful programs, and when you had talked about the alternatives to pesticides, I, you may know at 1:30 today, we're having a, a hearing with the Department of Pesticide Regulation, if you're available, it might be educational for you to come.
I'll definitely sit in, I was at the meeting that, I've been in a lot of meetings where Supervisor Ogoz has been in attendance.
It's great to have that partnership with you.
And they were sharing about the alternatives that they're looking at, and how, you know, the computerized way that they do things and so forth.
It's, it's an issue of economies of scale, being able to make it, use it so that the farmers can afford to stay in business while, while using these techniques.
And the training they do for safety purposes and so forth.
Right, great.
I think it's, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Board members, any other questions on this item? If not, it's before the board. We have a motion and a second, please vote. Appreciate the great work of the university and the advisor, thank you so much, and that passes unanimously. All right, how long do we, how much time do we need on 73?
Not much.
Okay, come on up. We'll be right with our 9:30 in just a second, that we really just scheduled this morning, so 73, we got a purchasing agent issue.
Good morning, Chair Long, Board of Supervisors, Mr. Powers. I'm Boyd Donovan, your Assistant Purchasing Agent, and I'm here with item 73. Pursuant to the California Government Code, Section 25502.5, purchasing agent is authorized to contract for services when the annual aggregate amount does not exceed $100,000. We're before you today to request your authorization and approval for the county purchasing agent to enter into agreements that are projected to exceed $100,000 for the fiscal year 2015, 2016, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, Board members, any questions on this? All right, then it's before the board, thank you. I know, again, a lot of work on that, but something we get to see annually, and please vote on item 73.
Is 74 a quick item?
Yep, 73, Mr. Donovan, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 74, I understand it's quick also? Good morning, Mr. Philigar.
Chair Long, Members of the Board, Mr. Powers, the item before you, Keith Philigar, Public Works, Real Estate Services, the item before you is a lease of the former Nylan Acres Pump Station. Property's been leased for quite a while, we've had difficulty finding a match between the tenant and the city of Oxnard, we feel we have that match now. The money from this lease revenue will go to offset sewer costs in the Nylan Acres area.
Great, any questions, Board members?
Madam Chair, I just want to thank Philigar and, and also Jeff Pratt. That little section there has become an attractive nuisance, and people are dumping trash air and so forth, and this is really going to help us out, and Mike Barber's going to be very happy about that.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, good job.
Thank you, Jeff.
Before the board, we got a motion and a second. Please vote.
Thank you.
Good work on that, thank you so much, and that, everybody vote, passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, that took care of the regular agenda, except for the one we scheduled this morning for item 69, and we are at 9:30, and Supervisor Parks.
Would you have a powerpoint? And this item is to request that the board support alternative D of the Rim of the Valley Corridor Study, and have our chair sign a letter of support. The Rim of the Valley Corridor Study is being conducted by the National Park Service, and it is a, a look at different ways of potentially expanding the national recreation area, the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area. They have a really unique partnership going on right now with that recreation area, with the National Park Service partnering with state local park agencies, and also with private landowners. And as a result of that partnership, it protects natural and cultural resources and furthers the public enjoyment of those lands. And what's nice about this unique collaboration is that it's seamless, and it has been in effect for over 30 years now, and has been very effective in protecting resources and also providing recreational opportunities for our citizens. So, the Congress has charged them, the National Park Service, with coming up with a potential of increasing or expanding the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area, and the National Park Service has come forward with four different alternatives, and they're listed here with everything from doing nothing to working with cooperative partnerships, and then the, the two that I focused on this morning is Alternative C, and this is expanding the rim of the valley boundary to go towards mostly the eastern portion of the Los Angeles area, where there is a need for more park space, you have a higher populated, higher density area. And then they, this is one that the National Park Service is recommending, but they have also put forward Alternative D, and this alternative really brings it into Ventura County, too, and it's one that the champion of this whole study to begin with, Congressman Schiff is endorsing, along with other congressmembers as listed up there, Congressman Ruchu Cardenas Lu, Congressman Sherman Becerra and others, as well as the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and I know the Caneo Recreation and Park District also supports it, and I know that comments are due, I believe, June 30th, and a lot of the cities in our area will be also considering support for Alternative D, and from Agurra Hills to the city of Thousand Oaks at their next meeting, I know the city of Moore Park, they're all looking at, also supporting Alternative D. And Alternative C expands, as I said, the, the area to the east and a little to the north, and it focuses those resources in the more urban areas where there is a greater need for recreational opportunities and access to open space. And if you look at the pink area here, that is what is Alternative C expansion, as you see, and I don't, I won't, I won't try for a pointer, but you probably see at the bottom of the map is the Santa Monica Mountains there. Alternative D, the one that I'm asking that our board support, it does include all of C plus the additional land in the northern, and most importantly for Ventura County, the western portion of the study area, and it includes wildlife corridors that will connect the study area to the Las Padres National Forest. And this is what D looks like with C, and as you can see, it takes in more of Ventura County and into the Las Padres Forest, and again, we have that great cooperation with the Forest Service also, so that is a, I think, a very positive way of being able to share resources. I think the bottom line is if we do Alternative D, it will provide more opportunities in Ventura County to get funding for a potential acquisition, and then also for protection of resources. We have two major wildlife corridors, as you know, in our area, from the South Coast Wildlife Corridor Study that they did, so that also will be incorporated, and also this, the area also is an area where we had two mountain lions just recently cross at the bottom of the Caneo grade, so it is very much an area that I think the National Park Service would like to monitor for wildlife, and also be able, as I said, work to see that we can potentially get some more funds for acquisition of recreational areas.
Mrs. Parks, could you toggle back and forth between C and D, just so we can see the differences?
Mm-hmm, sure.
For the public, thank you.
So, D is primarily focused on Los Angeles, if I, for the, if I could do, not really, but if you look at where Ventura County is, the far western edge of the pink area, it's about halfway to Simi Valley, so it kind of gives you an idea, but once you get over to the next one, D, it actually goes over, oh, there you have it, sorry, here we go. It actually expands over the, the white area in the middle of the pink is the Caneo Valley, so it just brings it over to the other side of the Caneo Valley and farther into Ventura County.
Thank you.
So, the, I have a question, so the National Park Service, their preferred alternative is C, but D is preferred by the cooperative, what's the language on it?
Yeah, Congressman Schiff is the one who brought this forward, and this is a list of the congressional representatives that supported-
Cooperative Conservation-
But obviously, there's a, a lot more than just the, the congressmembers, there is a tremendous swell, and I think that's what they're looking for, if there is a, a groundswell of, of support for that, then they will be more comfortable with recommending that, so that's what we're hoping.
Okay.
Let me just ask, okay, so, you don't want to look at what the national parks have already dipped at, so what happens to that land? Where's, who, who has that land now?
Yeah, the, the land, right now, a lot of the land is already in the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area. Of that land, there's 153,000 acres in that Santa Monica Mountain National Recreation Area, of which MPS only owns 15%. But what it does, it allows them to work cooperatively with, for example, private landowners to get trails through and to monitor the wildlife as we're seeing with the GPS collared mountain lions, and also 180,000 of those acres is owned by the U.S. Forest Service. So, it, it isn't, as you see, as they bring it forward to, over the city of Los Angeles, certainly that's not owned by the MPS, but it does give them an opportunity to get some of that further collaboration that has been so successful over the last 30 years.
So, what, I don't understand if-
It has no zoning regulation, for example.
But if private landowners want to do something, I don't understand what, what's the issue, why, why would you, what's, if the national parks were recommending, what is, what is the gain? I don't understand what's-
Yeah, well, the, the only time they acquire property is with willing sellers, so that gives them kind of an, an entrant into the private land if the owners want to, to sell it. It also allows for more programs to be available for those children in those areas, too. So, I know, I know we have a few speakers.
Yeah, it seems like it goes further than what the national parks do, and they, and they seem to do an awful lot, so.
Thank goodness for that, huh?
I had, I, I did receive this, I think all the board members did, it's quite extensive, and as, as I look at it, this really, it, if adopted by all the jurisdictions, it allows for the opportunity, but again, it doesn't take away any local control, local zoning, no mandate or eminent domain action, under the MPS rules, actually, so. Question on, I have a question, oh, I asked our planning director, and I understand that they too are reviewing this, particularly the biological components, and, and will be commenting on this, they just hadn't completed that work yet, so.
Well, the city of Thousand Oaks on Tuesday night, not this Tuesday, but next Tuesday, will have a recommendation from their staff for Alternative D, so I mean, I think that's kind of where we're seeing the, the political will.
Okay. Are there other questions of word, from board members at this time? We do have public comment requests? Okay, we'll go to those public comment requests, and the first one, and, and thank you for coming in this morning to comment on this item, those of you who are here, Yvonne Brockwell.
Madam Chair, before you get started on the public comments, I want to point out for the record, you've all received as well additional comments that have been submitted to you after the revision packet was released yesterday.
Yes, we did, we received quite a few of them, and we have quite a few requests to speak, so I would ask that your comments are three minutes, please.
Thank you. Good morning. My name's Yvonne Brockwell, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I was raised here in Ventura County, and my childhood and teen years were spent exploring creeks, streams, caves, mountains and forests throughout the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area and open space areas throughout our county. For my daughter and her friends, trips around the county are usually accompanied by stories about how at one time the freeway was divided by massive eucalyptus and how my brother and I used to hike to springs in the mountains that were near our home, and how we used to horseback ride through much of what was once backcountry. Our use of these lands has changed, but my family's love for it has never wavered. For the past three years, my daughter and I have been a part of an ongoing stream water monitoring project in the Malibu Creek watershed, an ongoing non-native species removal project, and restoration of oak woodlands in our Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area. We've cultivated deep friendships from people all over the world who come to study and enjoy and learn from this rare and valuable Mediterranean ecosystem. Again, we participate in four different citizen science programs, collecting and submitting data to help better manage resources in the Santa Monica Mountains. In addition to data collection, we're cultivating stewards for the land. Please support the National Park Service adoption of Alternative D for the Rim of the Corridor Study. We've only just begun to discover and realize the value of this unique ecosystem. Please protect these lands for future generations to continue to study how to best manage this resource. Please protect the opportunity for our young stewards and stakeholders to bloom. Thank you.
Thank you. Madeline Cray.
Good morning. My name is Madeline Cray. I'm from Thousand Oaks. I'm 14 years old. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. It's really important to me. For the past three and a half years, I volunteered in the Santa Monica Mountains with Heal the Bay, Mountain Restoration Trust, Tree People, on various projects. This land is very valuable to me personally and to my generation. This is my inheritance. This is my home. On behalf of my peers who are not here at the moment, please protect this and support Alternative D of the Rim of the Valley Study. Thank you.
Well, thank you. You're so well spoken, and thank you for speaking for your generation. Don Robinson.
Good morning. I, Don Robinson, am the Chair of the Advisory Board, the 26-member Advisory Board of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, and have been for 13 years and have been on that board for 23 years. And really, I'm trying to reflect, if you will, why the Conservancy passed on our favorably recommendation of item or Alternative D. And really quickly, as Supervisor Parks said, the collaboration is really the first place from which we begin. There's been interop, or interoperating agreements called MOUs between the Conservancy, the state parks, and the national parks in terms of all the activities that we've conducted over many, many years. Also, on the board of the Conservancy are, is the national parks, is the state parks, and is the Angeles Forest District, so there's a degree of constant communication amongst them all. And there are other manifestations of what I consider to be widespread cooperation. For example, this magazine produced by the National Parks features all the activities of almost any park entity within the survey area for the next three months. Very valuable tool. If you go onto a website, lamountains.com, you'll find 163 parks and information about them, and they are not just from the operating entities that I mentioned, but many of the other regional park authorities. So in essence, there's been a conserved, a concerted effort on behalf of all of the entities that are represented by us to use parks to our great advantage for the public in this area. When Secretary of the Interior Salazar visited our area about three years ago, he cited this as one of the best interagency cooperative efforts that he has seen and felt that it was exemplary for the rest of the country to look at what we do. So for us, the choice of A and B alternatives seem not to be the best. To continue to do what we do in Alternative C or D are the best configurations that we felt we would like to consider. And I'm going to let a subsequent speaker talk to why we chose D over C. As Supervisor Parks mentioned, C was recommended by the National Parks, but it isn't mandatory. What they're really seeking is input from the public. What does the public really favor, and we would like to at least encourage D as support? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Rory Skye? Did I pronounce that right? All right, I'll get there. Uh-huh, I'll get there. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors. I'm Rory Skye. I'm Chief Deputy Director of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. And as Mr. Robinson indicated and echoing Supervisor Parks' remarks, the Conservancy wholeheartedly supports Alternative D. A little history, it actually, one of the reasons D makes the most sense for the Park Service in recommending a boundary adjustment is it fairly closely overlaps the state, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy statutory jurisdiction that was enacted over 25 years ago. And that has allowed the Conservancy to try to acquire land from willing sellers, do programs, much as the Park Service does in the existing national recreation area. So for all the scientific reasons and the programmatic reasons and the potential for, at some point in the future, congressional appropriations that would allow the Park Service to do conservation easements or land acquisition or programs in this expanded area, we really urge that you support Alternative D. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question, just, just for the benefit of the public to understand, can you summarize for us why the Park Service is recommending C versus D?
I think, quite frankly, they did not want to appear to be overreaching. I, maybe I'm being a little too frank, but I, I think they were, they wanted the public and the local governments and the other elected officials to weigh in and say, C is sort of like the bare minimum, what, what else might you...
So no, no big objections to D? Just, just, you tell us, you tell us to do D, which is better than us saying we're going to do D. Okay, thank you.
Can I ask you a quick?
Yes, sir.
So do, is there enough money to purchase this property with the willing sellers we have now?
No, that's, that's very, very clear, that there's always, actually, the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy has done most of the land acquisition in our Rim of the Valley Corridor, and it's been through a variety of various state bond measures. In Los Angeles County, we've had the benefit of two open space measures that the voters voted for, so that has funded a lot of projects. The Park Service, I don't think, is expecting to get a big new appropriation, but these, this sets the stage so that as time goes on, clearly, there will be more need. I think there will be more support for, for funding new acquisitions, if they make sense from a scientific basis, and that's part of what the Park Service is looking for, is what makes sense for preserving the wildlife habitat languages up to Los Padres and into the Angeles.
So we just, okay, so as more of this land maybe comes available, willing sellers, because sometimes you do stuff and you kind of put things here, then this becomes less valuable, but I, I can't sell it because nobody has money for it, so what happens to those landowners if they'd like to do something?
Then they could, they would sell it on the open market. I mean, that, there's no, there's no cloud, there's no expectation that if it's in the national recreation area boundary or even the Conservancy boundary, that there, that somehow precludes another, another buyer, or it's up to the landowner.
Right, I guess I just, because it's great if the Conservancy says, hey, we got the money right now, it's this value, go sell it. If other things happen around it, the values start to drop, and I don't get my value, and then they didn't pay it when I did, and now it's, and I understand, but if, if you have the money to buy it, it's a different thing. I just hate to see landowners get constricted in what's happened, because it's happened before where my land's, because all this is going around me, I wanted to sell it to them, but if they would have had money five years ago, I would have sure got a lot more money for it than it is now because it's not valuable. But I'm just curious where your, if their revenues are coming, or money's coming to help pay for this, some of this stuff, because I think there's willing landowners that would like to do some of this, but they sometimes get a little squeezed, so, okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. George Lang.
Chair Long, fellow supervisors, senior staff, my name's George Lang. I'm one of your local elected officials from the Cano Valley on the Cano Recreation Park District Board of Directors, and I wear a number of hats in addition to wearing the MRCA flag shirt. I'm sure many of you don't even know what MRCA is, Mountains Recreation Conservation Authority. It's a JPA with the Rancho Simi Reckon Park District, Cano Reckon Park District, Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. We've heard a lot about Option D and why it's important. And one of the things that was mentioned by one of the previous multiple speakers was the collaborative activities that take place in the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area. This might surprise you, but there are more annual visitors to the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area, which is a national park, right here in Ventura County, in LA County, than in Yosemite. More visitors, in fact, I know that the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy, or the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area is the second largest, has the second largest number of visitors in the country for a national park. And as was alluded to, the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area is kind of the poster child for all national parks because of the previously mentioned collaborative efforts that take place amongst the various entities. One of our previous speakers, Don Robinson, is a president emeritus of the State Parks Foundation, very involved with state parks, and it's that kind of cooperation that takes place. I'm here, one, to, and this might already be in your packet, but I also provided a copy of the letter from the CRPD Board of Directors who supported Alternative D. Also, the Mountains Recreation Conservation Authority approved, and at our last board meeting approved, Alternative D, because it does provide, in kind of answer to Supervisor Foye's general question, it provides an area where landowners can have an opportunity to sell to a national park for open space, wildlife corridors. There needs to be more and more of that to support our environment, and was mentioned earlier by Supervisor Parks, the crossing of mountain lion at the Cano Grade. About four, five years ago, maybe even longer, one of the mountain, male mountain lions from the Los Padres National Forest made its way down to the Santa Monica Mountains and fostered a number of siblings. But if we can't continue to provide that kind of opportunities for our wildlife, for our, and as spoken by a 14-year-old, for our future generations, we're at fault. So this prop, Alternative D, gives us that opportunity to expand that and to have other open space and so forth bound, if that's the right word, to join the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area. It's just going to be a lot more...
Thank you.
I'm running out of time.
Yeah, you have, but good to see you, and thank you for your lifetime of advocacy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, George. Thank you. Janet Murphy.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Janet Murphy. I am a resident of Ventura County for 49 years. I've resided in Moore Park for 25 years. And I'm in support of the letter presented by Supervisor Parks that supports the alternative, Alternative D of the study. Today, we have a wonderful opportunity to include this, these viable natural and human resources to our national parks. I have walked and hiked many, many trails throughout these years with family and friends, now my two-year-old grand, almost two-year-old grandson, who's also enjoying these trails. We've experienced a diversity of habitat within the ecosystem, systems, and the wildlife corridor. They need connection as much as we can at this point. We can't lose anything else. So at least identifying these important habitats is critical. The pressures on the ecosystem is profound, and this will only help to ensure, as many have said already, for future generations to enjoy. Alternative D is the only viable proposal that will ensure this, and so our species, other species, we all can thrive. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Lynn Jensen.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to comment today. I kind of would like to take a different approach here because we represent landowners and stakeholders out in these areas. They are the stewards of the land designated, this Rim of the Valley Corridor, which is a lot of area, 650,000 acres, and we want to be sure that their voices are heard because this wasn't a time-certain item. It was, it was very last minute here, so, but I do appreciate being able to at least represent them. The vote today, you're talking about, in Alternative D recommends a boundary adjustment that affects 313,000 acres to be added to this recreational area. And there wasn't anything in the staff report that really had the perspective of landowners' stakeholders. There's supposedly 30 communities and 5.1 million residents that live in this Corridor Study area, and 50% of it is said to be private ownership, and the other 50% federally protected. And if you look at Ventura County as a whole, there's already 600,000 acres, already half of this county of the land is protected already in national forests, parks and Conservancy lands, providing quite a wonderful opportunity for open space recreation, which we support. And this area that you're talking about in Alternative D includes Santa Monica Mountains, Simi Hills, Cano Mountain, Los Poses Hills, that the study looked at, and they determined that it was not suitable for adding to the national park system. Most concerning to COLAB is that the study considers agriculture as a significant impact to, to resources. And this generally includes both irrigated ag and grazing. And we actually know that there's some projects that are happening in the Santa Monica Mountains in Ventura County that have not been allowed to convert land to agriculture. And my question is, where are we going to grow our food? And what about the future of our residents here in terms of trying to provide food for the area? And will we have local agriculture survive here in the county? While the study professes that the addition of new areas to this recreational area would not necessarily establish due regulatory or land use authority over private lands, we see what happens in planning divisions and such as the rules change when, when we do these kinds of things, adding things to recreational areas. We believe that it's very important to keep the integrity of working landscapes like agriculture and grazing lands in the county. We don't think this is the goal of the Park Service, and that these lands contribute to the economy of the county and are privately managed, and particular for the city areas, they provide critical fire protection to surrounding communities, and we think that would be very difficult for the Park Service to manage these lands, to keep that going. Also, with respect to public access, last week at the Planning Commission, there was quite a bit of discussion about the amount of graffiti on national boulders on the way up Santa Paula Canyon Trail to the Punch Bowl. So basically, what we think is that, that this money would be better spent with the Los Padres National Forest, funding that forest to add new trails and existing trails, and we would support, we would rather support Alternative A or B to maintain viable farms and ranch lands in the county.
Thank you for your comments. Quick question, Ms. Jensen.
So you're saying COLAB supports A and B, not C orgy?
We're actually looking at all of the alternatives. We haven't had a, in a complete review, but our, our opinion right now, just in looking at the alternatives, is that if we keep it the same, then we'll allow agriculture to continue in these areas. We are concerned that that may not be the case.
So your current position is A and B?
Current position, yes.
Thank you.
Do you have any examples where agriculture land is not allowed to be because it's, I, I've never heard of that before.
Okay, well, how about, I will send you the project information.
Right.
It's actually in the Santa Monica Mountains.
Because unless it's, unless it's owned by a park agency, there is no zoning regulatory effect at all.
That's correct, but when these projects go through planning and they're trying to convert some of their land that actually has agriculture on it, trying to add to that, they're, they're not being allowed to do that.
Well, unless the land is owned by a park agency, there is no authority to do that. So I just point that out, that's a fact.
These things happen, though.
Yeah, but, but there has been where people show up at city council meetings, the Park Service show up and say, you're going to have horses over there, we don't really want horses there. And that's where you get a little problematic, I think, when you get two cows.
Yeah, it's, it's a concern in terms of the lifestyle, the difference between the lifestyle and the ability to steward lands. In fact, I would say that if you have the opportunity to look at a Royal Verde Park in terms of the species that are there and the management of that, and the weeds that are out of control, and then you look at some of the areas that are stewarded by these ranchers, where they have rotational grazing, and they really steward the land well, there is, there is a difference.
Yeah, and then you have areas that are, people move next to so they can ride their horses through the national parks, the state parks, so, but I should say it's a matter of lifestyle, but it isn't a regulatory authority, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Kim Lamori, that's our last speaker.
Good morning, honorable supervisors. My name is Kim Lamori, and I'm president of the Los Virginas Homeowners Federation, representing almost 10,000 residents in the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area. As a nonpartisan, 48-year-old organization, our homeowners, property owners, and businesses have been thriving in our national park for 37 incredible years. I'm also representing the Rim of the Valley Coalition, a broad collection of diverse organizations spanning both Ventura County and Los Angeles County, who are all working together to see Alternative D come to fruition. The Federation can attest firsthand and unequivocally to the benefits we have and continue to accrue living in national parkland. Fact is, NPS brings higher property values, and open space continues to increase our property values. Our HOAs and communities compete fiercely to get the Park Service and partnering land management agencies to purchase open space in and around their neighborhoods. Our quality of life has been greatly enhanced. Parks and open space create a high quality of life that attracts tax-paying businesses and residents to our communities. NPS is our community partner, an integral part of our framework, contributing to our overall character and maintenance. We take NPS service for granted, our well-maintained trails, education centers, visitor centers, access to scientists and their cutting-edge studies and resources that we would otherwise not have. NPS protects our cultural resources, therefore taking much of the burden from local residents. NPS is a boost to our local economy. Over 600,000 visitors in 2013 spent $26 million in our adjacent communities, creating over 300 jobs. The National Park Service has significantly increased outdoor recreational opportunities and access for all, including 500 miles of trails for hiking and for our equestrians. Alternative D is also the superior choice because connectivity is key. Through several mountain ranges to the sea, D will link the most comprehensive network of raw wildlife corridors and pristine habitat, critical to saving our threatened wildlife and preserving more of our rich biological diversity and rare Mediterranean ecosystem. Alternative C would leave thousands of acres of nationally significant resources without adequate protection. So, more parks for more people and connecting the dots in preservation for future generations. Alternative D is a win-win for everyone, our homeowners, our wildlife, our resources, our quality of life, and commerce. We know the Santa Monica Mountains National Recreation Area is a partnership park that works. Please join us in supporting D, its seamless network of local, state, and federal parks interwoven successfully with private lands and prosperous communities. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
And that concludes the public speaking request on this item. No other in the public wishing to speak. We'll bring it back to the board. Oh, wait a minute, we have a card? Oh, please come up. Come on up. Anyone else, please bring a card up if you wish to speak. We have our 10 o'clock time certain items awaiting. Thank you.
Very short.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning, board members. I'm here this morning to urge you to support Alternative D of the Rim of the Valley Study. Alternative D is a superior alternative as it includes the Ventura County-Caneo Grade Corridor, which would connect the parkland on the coast to inland open spaces. And as other people have mentioned, this is especially important in light of the two National Park Service radio-monitored mountain lions, which recently crossed the 101 freeway in the Caneo Creek area. We have an unequal opportunity to bring this to Ventura. Please support the motion by Supervisor Parks to adopt Alternative D in the NPS study and authorize the board chair to sign a letter of support. Now is the best chance that we will ever have to ensure our wildlife and open spaces survive for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Okay. All right, so now it's back to the board for any questions, discussion?
I'd like to go ahead and, oh, do you have questions?
I don't have a question, I have a comment, but I can make it after you make the motion.
Okay, sure. If I can go ahead and make the recommendation that we do support Alternative D and have our chair send a letter in support of that, I just comment that I think Congressman Schiff was very interested in expanding it out in his area, and just, it gives us an opportunity to really kind of grab onto those coattails and include it in our area, too, because it is absolutely something that affects our quality of life. And as the past speaker just said, you know, now is the time, because if we don't act on it now, we may not have this opportunity for decades. And I think really important to realize is that the need is growing. If you've been out there on the trails, you're seeing more and more people out there, and it is just so important to have the resources, to have the access. And, and I loved Mr. Lang bringing the Outdoor Magazine. I mean, it does show all the programs of all the different agencies, and I can see our park agency being a part of that program, too, you know, just that collaboration, I think, is so important, and I think this is a great opportunity that we shouldn't pass up, and I hope you support me for this motion.
Second to the motion, I just would like to point out, interesting juxtaposition at the end with the representative of the thousands of homeowners in the Los Virginas Valley speaking about how those private property owners view this as a great enhancement to their property, and COLAB representing private property owners that have concerns about this. And so I think it probably tells us something about who the different private property owners are that support the homeowners association versus support COLAB at this point in time.
I think it's the people whose property is going to be affected, not the people who live next to it. I think it's the difference, and I think that's going to be the key, so.
Well, and I, I see this as a framing document. I think it, as, and I read through this, and as the supervisor spoke, this is, this is a first step, this really, there's nothing that can be, should be, or will be done to people. It really will be a cooperative filling in of the, of the framework that's being put forward once this, one of these alternatives is adopted. And so I think, and in addition to that, to be able to find the funding that would be necessary to implement any of these alternatives is a long-term planning framework, so I think it's valuable to do. Please vote. We have a motion, a second, please vote. And that passes four to one. Thank you all who came to speak and bringing the item forward. Okay, now, thank you so much for coming in, to those public speakers, we appreciate it. And next, we're going to our 10 o'clock time certain, item 48, our bittersweet time certain. Supervisor Parks.
It is very bittersweet, but let's focus on the sweet. And that is just a big thank you from our county to one gentleman who has made a difference in helping people with severe mental illness, and also people who may be needing any kinds of service for mental health. And I just want to give my thanks, and the Board of Supervisors wants to recognize Ratan Bhavnani. Bhavnani, you think I'd get it down by now? I'm good, Bhavnani, thank you, for his work. And I know it's been at least seven years now, and he's been working with the National Alliance for the Mentally Ill, helping NAMI and being able to grow their programs. And the most important part of that is helping families. And he has been an advocate that has made really good connections with a lot of different people and organizations, and really gained a lot of respect along the way. And I'm sorry to see him go, that's, that's the bitter part, but we just, so much respect you. I have a resolution I'd like to come down and present to you. It's not enough, but it is the beginning of our ability to say thank you, so I'm going to come on down and present it to you.
Yes, board members, would you like to add some few words, why the supervisor steps down? Supervisor Zaragoza?
No, I just, you know, I have not worked with Ratan that long, but I had the pleasure of working with him and meeting him over at NAMI, gave me some good words and things about NAMI and mental health, so congratulations on your retirement, and thank you so much for your good work. Thank you.
There's, there's one of our strong advocates out there. Thank you, Karen. Just, it is bittersweet. I mean, wonderful for you and wonderful for your wife and your family. Your passion has just overflowed into both being an advocate at the start and then being a leader as you work through the needs of the organization and growing the organization. It's been exemplary, very passionate, very loving. Thank you for that.
Ratan, yeah, I, you know, so many people in this situation, I just, the other day, the, you know, the, the great phrase, you, you really can't measure yourself until you measure how much you do for others. And you took the personal challenges that you had and translated that into how you were going to help a lot of other people deal with similar challenges, and that's a great gift to a lot of people, so thank you very much.
(inaudible)
I'm just going to read the resolution. I'm just going to read the resolution.
Upon his retirement from the National Alliance on Mental Illness of Ventura County, whereas the National Alliance on Mental Illness is a nonprofit organization committed to providing emotional support, education, and resources for families affected by mental illness through community collaboration, education, and advocacy. And whereas, Ratan Bhavnani of NAMI, joined NAMI Ventura County's Board of Directors in 2005 and was appointed as Executive Director in 2008, he has since worked tirelessly to ensure a continued commitment for mental health support and awareness throughout Ventura County. And whereas his role as Executive Director, Mr. Bhavnani has been instrumental in pursuing essential partnerships with local government and community-based organizations in order to maximize NAMI's mental health advocacy. And whereas, under Mr. Bhavnani's leadership, NAMI Ventura County has expanded its ability to serve more people in the community through increased outreach and programs, and a lot more programs, too, that assist those with mental illness as well as their families. And whereas throughout his tenure at NAMI Ventura County, Mr. Bhavnani has earned the respect and high esteem of his many colleagues and partners, and I know we have many here today throughout our county, who appreciate that despite his busy schedule, and a lot of that has to do with your devotion to family, he ceaselessly advocates for the seriously mentally ill, never hesitating to stop where he is, what he is doing, to listen and offer assistance to individuals who need it. And therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County declare this Ratan Bhavnani Day, and take great pleasure in recognizing Ratan upon his retirement from NAMI, and wish you and your family all the best in your future endeavors. So thank you so much. You're wonderful. Thank you.
I really offer a couple of words. It's so nice to see you wearing NAMI pins, Supervisor Parks, we really appreciate that. And I didn't realize my name conflicted so much, caused so much chaos and confusion. You won't have much to deal with that much longer. But, you know, over, over 30, over 30 years as a, as a computer professional, I took a class offered by NAMI then because I had a situation, my son had a mental illness. And I learned a great deal. NAMI teaches a lot to family members in these classes. There was a time when I used to go into Hillmont Psychiatric Center, and the receptionist would greet me as Dr. Bhavnani. In fact, Supervisor Zaragoza called my office just last month and said, I want to speak to Dr. Bhavnani, right? So anyway, that's the amount of education that we get out of NAMI. I learned then that NAMI had no office, no staff, so we, I've put my energies into working to, to growing the organization. And then through a series of circumstances, three years later, I became the Executive Director, and here we are today. The organization is strong, I want to be sure that you understand that. My leading the organization is probably going to make it stronger. We continue to help hundreds of families living with mental illness through our education and support programs, and, and this work is very fulfilling to me, to my staff, and to our volunteers. I have no doubt we'll continue to grow and help wherever the need is, is greatest. I want to thank several people, of course, Mr. Powers and the board have been very supportive in, in, in the work that we do in mental illness generally, in the advocacy work that NAMI puts forward. But the Ventura County Behavioral Health Administrators, in particular, Melanie Roy in the past, and Elaine Crandall, and all of their managers have been very supportive, Barry Fisher as well. Thank you, Barry. My board has been very supportive, of course, at the NAMI, and my staff. Would you please stand again if you are here, Joan?
Your volunteer staff?
Chris, Joan, and Diane, with just a handful of people, we can get a lot of work done because we have, again, as you know, we leverage our time with over 100, 150 volunteers who teach all these classes and do all these activities. And of course, I want to thank my wife for letting me give up all bunches of Saturdays and nights and working on emails over the weekend and late nights and so on, so she's been supportive of me, but it's time to sort of, for me to come back and spend a little bit more time with family and friends. I'm truly humbled to receive this recognition from you guys. It is, I, I think the organization, I will dedicate this to NAMI, of course, but I appreciate your confidence in me. And I, I'm sure you're not going to see the end of me, I'll be standing up at this podium, and I'll be advocating for more work around the world as an individual community member, so thank you again.
Great. Okay, we have a, a public speaker request on this, Ratan, not, not surprised, I'm sure. Janice Gardner.
State.
Don't go far. Roberto.
Hi.
Rodriguez Grego.
Good afternoon, no, good morning.
Good morning.
Chair Long and CEO Mike Powers and the board. I'm Janice Gardner, I'm the current Chair of the Behavioral Health Advisory Board, and I just want to thank you, Supervisor Parks, for bringing this recognition award to our very, very good friend, Ratan. He's been a wonderful friend to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Your tireless efforts in helping those with mental health challenges knows no bounds, Ratan. Your, your sense of humor and your dry wit always made it a pleasure to work with you. Sometimes we weren't quite sure exactly what he was, what he was, what was on his agenda. But we, we are so appreciative of all of the work that you have done throughout the years, previously with the Mental Health Board, and then when the board merged and became the Behavioral Health Advisory Board. Ratan has implemented countless, hundreds and hundreds of programs for this group of our citizens who have mental health challenges through NAMI. Your, your, your personal, your personal advocacy and your professional advocacy is, is just beyond wonderful, and we're so appreciative. I also believe that today is a very good day for you. In addition to retiring, yesterday, the Behavioral Health Advisory Board made a recommendation to approve Laura's law. And when I say that Ratan was a fierce advocate, that is an understatement, right? So we just appreciate you so much, and we hope that you're not going to be a stranger to the BHAB, and that you'll come around again, and I'm sure that we'll all be seeing a lot more of you. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you, Janice. Thank you. Mr. Powers, Mr. Powers?
Thank you, Chair Long. Just real quick, I've had the privilege of working with Ratan for many years, and you took the words right out of my mouth, Janice, a fierce advocate. And so it's been wonderful to be on the same side of issues with you. But I say fierce, but also thoughtful, and a great collaborator, partner, and friend. And your advocacy always came from the heart, and it was so genuine, and you've just made our whole mental health system here in the county so much better. I think a great symbol of the work that you've done is the, the NAMI Annual Holiday Party. And if you've never been, you really should go, because the warmth and energy that comes from that party is amazing, and it really captures your spirit, so just thank you.
Thank you. Roberto. Grego. And Ernie in the background. Hi, Ernie. Hi, Ernie.
Hi, I'm Roberta Grego. On behalf of the NAMI Board of Directors today, I just want to, first of all, invite you all on Tuesday, the June 30th, between 5:00 and 7:00. There's going to be a nice little party, which our, my dear friend here didn't really want to have and stuff. But definitely the NAMI family and the community as well wanted to honor Ratan for all of his dedicated commitment. I've never, I've kind of known Ratan by sitting where Brian was for those eight years when he started into the community. And so his compassion and really support and love of definitely finding the causes to break the stigma and pass something to come forward. You'll be seeing us when Laura's Law definitely tries to become before your board, to show the passion of what is needed in Ventura County. He is definitely recognized throughout the state for all of his hard work and dedication. And when he does say that he will be here to definitely be on the volunteer side like I am, that definitely he will stay forever and ever of that compassion and a drive to support the people and loved ones with mental illness. So Ratan, I can't thank you enough. It was really kind of your passion and commitment and love of mentoring and stuff that really brought me forward to NAMI Ventura County. So I just want to thank all of you for honoring him today, and definitely hope to see you then on the 30th.
Thank you. Okay.
If you could come down here, if we can take a photo together. And I just also, you know, pointing out, yes, please, come down for the photo, everybody. And I also want to point out, you know, with the Horizon View coming, you know, that to me is kind of symbolic of what you've been going through and having to travel outside the county, and how wonderful that would be for the whole mental health community to be able to have a facility here in our county again.
Karen Bates has been around forever.
We have Board of Supervisors in the background. We'll face this way.
She's always a delight, too. Karen.
Is this your family?
Yeah, this is Karen with her friends. Close right as they're standing.
Come right here. Jen, thank you. Brian's picture. Send it over.
Joan, come on. Sorry.
Come on, Jen. 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 Come on, Jen.
Roberto?
Good. I have no doubt.
Roberto, would you, would you make sure the board offices receive information on the party? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I use some of your slides. I took a friend from House of Commons, I thought it was important. So I, was over at Oxford and...
All right, board members, thank you. That was a wonderful recognition, and so appreciated. Our next one isn't bittersweet, our next one is sweet, sweet. And I'd like to invite up Father Gary Carriocu, I'm sorry, Father Gary. I just say Father Gary, of the Saint Demetrius Greek Orthodox Church. And this is to again celebrate and recognize and kick off the annual Ventura County Greek Festival and Greek Heritage Week. And I'll say a few words about that, and then ask the Fathers to say a few words. As the Board has annually again recognized this, it's important to do so as this is the only Greek Orthodox church in our county, and it's been around since October of 1977. It is, there is still, the festival is at the airport grounds, but the church is just rising out of the new site in Camrio off of Santa Rosa Road, and it's absolutely breathtakingly beautiful. And there's been an awful lot of work in order to make that happen, as Father Gary has been the leader and passionate inspirational leader to really, really make that happen. The community is going to be celebrating the 37th Annual Greek Heritage Festival. Again, it will be this year at Camrio's Freedom Park. And this is home to 200 Orthodox families, and again, the only church in Ventura County. Continues to grow under the leadership of Reverend Father Gary and all of the members of the church. They did break ground as they celebrated the opening of the doors of the new church in May, and there was a gala, and the church again is on Santa Rosa Road, the new church, which is just one of the buildings that will be coming up out of the ground for expansion of the church and the church's mission and passion. The 37th Annual Greek Festival is from June 26th through the 28th, and you can go on Facebook and like this, and please do, and help to promote it. And there's, there's a picture. Thank you for getting that organized. I appreciate that.
It looks better in person.
Yeah, it really, it's beautiful. The festival is a way to celebrate the heritage, the culture, the performances by the many dance groups, as well as the open floor Greek dancing, which I have taken advantage of on occasion, and the Greek-themed arts and crafts, games, rides, and jumpy jumps. It will provide many offerings of our favorite Greek foods and Greek desserts that are so sweet, sweet. And again, it's an opportunity to celebrate both the Greek Heritage Week and the culture and the wonderful Greek community we have here in Ventura County. And I will step down to present this again, and welcome you to say a few words.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Long, Chairman of the Board, and Mr. Michael Powers, CEO and Honorable Supervisors. Thank you for having us again this year. Really appreciate it. First, I have to offer you my apologies. Usually I bring some sweets with me to entice you. No sweets, I'm sure, they're still, they're still, I will come back. They're still preparing them. So the festival's still a few days out, and so the ladies are baking and preparing them. But what I wanted to say before that was, just sitting here watching the meeting from here on, from when I got here, to have a 14-year-old young lady come up and speak, to see you preserving sacred ground for future generations to explore, as some of the speakers mentioned, and to honor the doctor that was just up here for his help with the Ventura County NAMI Board, I just want to say what a great place to live, right? You all should be very proud of yourselves and the work that you do, and just Ventura County is a great place to live. And it's part of the reason why we do the Greek Festival every year, is because we want to give back to the community and offer some of our heritage and fun as well, so that people understand that there's more to life than just the mundane things that go on Monday through Friday, and that we can let our hair down and enjoy culture and each other's heritage and that as well. So thank you very much for having us. I appreciate it. You're all welcome to come see the building whenever you do wish. We're still waiting on our certificate of occupancy to get into the building, which should be in the next five to 10 days. If any of you can help expedite that, that'd be, that'd be great, but, exactly. But in any case, we're very proud of what we've put up there, and we, we hope that you enjoy it. When you drive by, you see that we've beautified the community just a little bit more. So thank you. Thank you.
It's very beautiful, and I offer this to you, and, and we can all attend because it helps to raise the funds that are needed for the future opportunities on the church grounds, and buy some of those pastries. They're wonderful. And the food is wonderful, and the dance is wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for honoring us every year. Appreciate it.
See you at the festival.
All right. Look forward to it.
I've got 10 people joining me.
Madam, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm going to have to step out for a few minutes, and I was just wondering if we could do Item 52. We are at 10:30. I just talked with Supervisor Zaragoza. He said he was fine bumping that in front of Item 50.
I think Bertha can wait another couple of minutes.
Yeah, it's, it's really just the Oakview Park Resource Center.
Okay, fine. Let's do it. We have staff here on it?
I don't see staff here, but I don't know that we need, we don't need staff here.
It's an easy one.
Yeah, it's an easy one. So I just move the recommendation to action for Item 52, and thank you for your support on that. If I don't get back for 11 o'clock, Items 55 and 56 are in my district, but nobody in my district has contacted me about those, I'm certainly in support of those standby charge increases.
What is? 52 is a public hearing, I'm sorry. 52 is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak from the public on this item. Seeing no one run up but our wonderful staff, and staff, you can just stand there and nod your head. We have a motion of second on this item. We're very familiar with it. That's always good work.
Is there anything, is there anything critical? Anything critical?
I was watching in my office, and all of a sudden we jumped four.
I know, exactly. Is there anything critical you need to say? Great. Thank you very much. He does a great job with the, with the program.
Yeah, managing that. Yes, thank you. All right, motion second, please vote. Now it's on 52, and that passes five zip. Thank you. 52 has passed. You're welcome. Okay, now, yeah. Item 50, back to Item 50. Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank Bertha Garcia, the Executive Director, and her team. They're going to give us some really good information today about the Ventura County Community Development Corporation, VCCDC. They work as a nonprofit real estate brokerage out of Oxnard. VCCCD is Home Center, is a one-stop resource community center assisting buyers with purchasing of their homes. Ventura County Community Corporation Home welcomes all buyers in need of education, consulting, services, workshops, counseling, lending, and realty support sessions, down payment support, and other resources to assist purchasing homes in Ventura County to start from start to finish. One of the things I'd like to share is that apparently there was a, on June 6th, I attended, you know, the annual homeownership fair over in Oxnard, and it's one of the biggest home center workshops in the county. And the theme was "A Dream Within Your Reach." A very special guest attended that event at that time, and this is a teacher that wrote a book. She's an author. Her name is Irma Perez, who wrote a very popular book called "Mi Cuartito," meaning "My Little Room." And this is really important for individuals that don't have rooms, that, you know, individuals that sleep together, you know, and so forth, maybe two, three kids in one room. But this is really important, so Perez captures the importance of the family owning their own home, and a little girl having their own little room by herself. Ms. Perez is a schoolteacher in Oxnard, has been recognized for many of her work in literature throughout children's books in the country. Owning a home is the American dream. Bertha and her team have been very successful, and this is why she calls it, "Why does homeownership mean to you? What does it mean to you?" That is a question. And many individuals and families just as words like, "It's family, it's security, it's comfort, it's peace, and freedom, and an investment for their family." Let's welcome Bertha and her team. Bertha, can you share some information?
Welcome. Good morning.
Thank you, Supervisor Zaragoza. That was a kind introduction. Good morning, Chair Long and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Bertha Garcia, Executive Director of the Ventura County Community Development Corporation, and I am very honored and pleased to be here today. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present to you and share with you information about our wonderful organization, as well as our much-needed services that we offer in the community. We would also like to share with you our accomplishments for the past year, several years since we've been incorporating since 2001, and also where we see our future direction going with our organization. Here with me, I have Board Member Anthony Restivo. He will be presenting and walking you through a very short PowerPoint presentation. As well as, I would like to acknowledge key members of our team and Board Member present in the audience, Laura Cabrera, Alex Vega, Brandon Ramey, and Board Member Ted Schneider. Thank you again for the opportunity to present, and I'm here happy now to pass on the microphone to Anthony.
Thank you.
And welcome to the board, too.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I want to first recognize Supervisor John Zaragoza for recommending we be allowed to present on the agenda today. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. What I'm going to do is give you some insight as to what VCCDC does for the community and what they've done over the last year. And at the very end, I'm going to, I'm going to share a story that's similar to the book that Supervisor Zaragoza shared. Beginning with the history of the organization, they were founded in 2001, and they were, the individual that was responsible for putting VCCDC together was Mr. Rodney Fernandez. And I believe that all of you probably are familiar with the work that he's done over his lifetime. And he was, he was a great, great individual, and his contributions to the community were very much appreciated. So what VCCDC does, they serve first-time homebuyers and existing homeowners and youth who in the future would like to own a home. That's their target market. What they do for them is they provide financial management. One more. There we go. What they do for the community is they provide financial management and counseling services, lending services, as well as realty services. From a financial management and counseling perspective, they provide homebuyer education, financial management workshops where they bring in the residents of the community and prepare them for what they might expect when it comes time for homeownership. They also do home preservation counseling for those that are perhaps in trouble with the home that they currently own, and they help them to find resources to sustain their In the lending, they provide Community Reinvestment Act mortgage services, which benefit our financial institutions in the, in the community, as well as our residents. And most importantly, they, they assist with finding down payment assistance for residents that would like to own a home. The realty services, this is a newer component of the organization, and the Realtors combined have 35 years of experience in this community, in the, as far as servicing people with real And this is what they've done since 2007. There are 717 families that have purchased their first home in Ventura County, and that was made possible by VCCDC. They've closed 79 million in first and second mortgage loans, which is a significant contribution to our economy. They've provided one-on-one counseling for over 6,000 families. Those are individuals that may not have even had an idea of how to begin with the path to homeownership. All this information is provided to you, and you guys can review it at a later time. The strategic plan that we've put together to serve the community between 2014 and through next year of 2016 is shown here. Our plan is to assist 378 families in becoming new homeowners. We want to provide 1,625 families with individual coaching and counseling to get them on the track to homeownership. We want to assist 157 families in homeownership through realty services, so helping them actually find the home and purchase it. And this is the family that I wanted to share that I mentioned that was similar to the book. So this is the Abara family, and what they were faced with, they had five children, and they were, they were all living in one room.
The whole family.
The whole family in one room. And they were finding it more and more difficult to explain to their children, "This is how we have to live currently." And once they were, became acquainted with VCCDC and the services that they provide, that allowed them to actually go and purchase a home, and they no longer have to sleep on the floor, they're no longer in one room, they have a home that they own, they can take pride of ownership in, they can, you know, for generations to come, that home can be passed down through their family, and from there they can expand and... And they were finding it more and more difficult to explain to their children, "This is how we have to live currently." And once they were, became acquainted with VCCDC and the services that they provide, that allowed them to actually go and purchase a home, and they no longer have to sleep on the floor, they're no longer in one room, they have a home that they own, they can take pride of ownership in, they can, you know, for generations to come, that home can be passed down through their family, and from there they can expand and contribute more to our community. So the services that VCCDC provides allow individuals to expand their horizons and become more, a bigger part of our community, and that's what this organization is about. That's why I've joined the board, to assist in any way that I can in achieving those dreams. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I want to thank you. Your board also has a mayor, Fillmore is in that board, right, or works with the CCD, with the corporation, and also Hannah Matt Jackson was there supporting you, and Das Williams, and quite a few other elected officials that were there the other day. And one of the things that you mentioned too, you know, for that family, and I just want to reiterate what the words are, "They have family together, security, comfort, peace, freedom, and investment." And I think the security and comfort is so important to those individuals, and having their own little room is really important to a lot of individuals as opposed to all of them sleeping together and so forth. So I just want to thank, you know, the VCCDC for all the good work, and Garcia and all the team, you know, for doing that outstanding work. I want to thank you so much for that.
I want to thank all of you.
Yes, thank you.
Besides doing that, it gives them the opportunity to live the American dream, which is great.
That is.
That's right.
I like the continuing the legacy of Rodney also.
And Rodney too, you know, the legacy of Rodney is extremely important.
Outstanding, outstanding work, and you do take the dream and help people to reach that dream, so thank you so much.
And thank you for waiting, too.
Yeah. Okay, Supervisor, thank you for bringing this forward. It is a receiving file action.
Yep, absolutely.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. We appreciate your good work and all the board members. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Again, that passed. Now we're on to our next time-certain item, which is item 51, and that's our treasurer tax collector.
He's just waiting. He didn't come running in or anything.
And then we're taking him in his break.
I think running may be a thing of the past, Supervisor Foy. Madam Chair, Honorable Members of the Board, Mr. Powers. I came to Ventura County in April of 1975, and there hasn't been a single day that I didn't think Ventura County was the best place I could possibly be living. And I want to follow on the comments to that effect from a previous speaker, that this is a great place. There have been marvelous decisions made in governance, and it is a remarkable place to live. I was recently at a meeting of all the other treasurer tax collectors in the state, and boy, how do they have some horror stories about dealing with their governance issues, and I have been blessed by being able to work with you. I think part of that is that my very first meeting with Mr. Powers in January of 2011, I told him that I would always tell him the truth, and that I hoped he would tell the Board of Supervisors that I would always tell them the truth, too, whether it was good truth or unfortunate truth, that it would be the truth. And it's nice when you're able to tell the truth, and it's all good news. And so that's what my report this month, and the report of investments, is. In April, our annualized percentage yield was .407, that is 40.7 basis points, continuing the previous upward curve. The dollar yield increased to $779,000. We invested $442 million in 20 workdays, taking advantage of the inflow of tax payments in April. In other words, we invested 20% of the total fund just in April at an average of $20 million each workday. And in other good news is we're continuing to hold our costs attributable to the management of the fund at six basis points, down from perhaps a year of seven basis points. We're holding at six right now. I'd like to tell you a couple of, or at least one very minor change that we're going to make in the report in the future. Right now, Exhibit 3 is a separate list of federal agency holdings. I don't see the need to have that broken out as a separate file anymore, and I propose not to report it separately. Instead, I'm going to substitute something that has never been in the report as a chart. It will be a rolling two-year chart of the actual dollar yield of the pool. Exhibit 4 already is a rolling two-year report of the percentage yield, but our participants in the pool are actually a lot more interested in the dollar yield, that is, how much they're going to get out of the earnings of the pool. So we're going to substitute a new Exhibit 3, which will be a rolling two-year report of the actual dollar yield for that month to the pool. One of the benefits of giving the April report in the middle of June is that I can act as if I can see the future, because I've already written the report for the next future. So I'm pleased to tell you that we expect that May's reported yield will be .444, which is statistically speaking, a significant increase over the report for April, that the May dollar yield is going to be $874,000, which is to say a 95, I'm not good at math, a 94, $95 million, $94, $95,000 increase in the yield, actual yield. Our projected June percentage yield, going forward even another month, is going to be around 46 basis points, and the fund itself is invested in items which eventually, if held to maturity, would yield over 47 basis points. Each of those is a measurable increase. I have told you before that the increase will not be dramatic, but it will be measurable. And so that's what we're going to see on these charts, is a steady increase. In terms of the management of the pool, we have closed the investment program for the next three weeks. We are not doing investments for the next three weeks. For the next two weeks, we're involved in year-end accounting, which is complicated. It's cleaning up the transactions that seem to have minor issues, and to prepare the year-end fiscal year reports in a timely fashion. All of the members of the investment work group are also Treasury staff, so they have two jobs to do, and the year-end Treasury report is a major report, and I want to make sure that they have the opportunity to get that done.
And that's different than the Citizens Advisory Committee.
Yes.
Right.
The, at the same time, the next two weeks show a burst of training as the Treasury Department gets ready for the inception of the new financial management system. We, our people have to be trained, they have to go to repeated meetings with, may God bless them, the staff of the auditor controller who are trying very hard to make sure that this goes right. So we're all in meetings, and we just decided that it would be better off to stop investments. We're also taking the first week of July as a dark week, because that's the week of the implementation of VCFMS, and while we are hopeful that everything goes just as slick as possible, if it doesn't go right, it will mean a large number of paper transactions coming through the Treasury. Even if it does go right, it's a significant increase in Treasury transactions. If it doesn't go right, they're going to be done in paper, and as I joke, we'll also be reporting our transactions on three-column ledger paper in blue ink. So we're taking those three weeks off. You can never say never, of course. One of the nice things about our status with our brokers is that occasionally they will call up and say, "Psst, hey, I got a hot one." And so we have to take a look at those, just to be sure that we don't pass up something spectacular. I don't, I'm not a very good prognosticator, but there is some interest rate news in the future. All of the, all of the interest rate talking heads are going gaga over one employment number. They've just gone crazy over one reported increase in employment, and they're saying, "Oh, well, the Federal Open Market Committee is just about to shuck its policy of controlled rates." I don't think so. All the other numbers are holding steady, price and salary inflation, total labor participation, production, those items hold steady at the blah numbers that we've seen for the last couple of years. But I'll tell you, I think the Federal Open Market Committee is bored, and I know what happens to me when I get bored. I want to do something. And I think they're tired of being bored, and I bet that in September they will provide guidance, and in December they will raise interest rates a quarter of a point. And so, to answer the most frequent question I'm asked here, it is still a good time to finance a real estate purchase, but it will not always be so. And what happens if interest rates go up? Now, that's the real pig in a poke, that nobody knows what it is. It could crush the real estate market, it could cause a crash in the stock market, but we will make money.
And, Your Honor, what did they?
Because we are in the interest rate market.
They're still at four and 3% for 15 years and so forth, so it's a good rates.
It's still a good time in Ventura County.
I like that you added the rolling two-year yield. I think it's right word I was thinking about when I was looking at the charts, and I was wondering if you could do the same thing for the average monthly balance, because it always is good to have the perspective of time, maybe in the future. It's a great measure.
Exhibit 4 is the average monthly balance. It is a bar chart. We can convert that into a line chart.
I do, I do see it also as a line chart, portfolio, average monthly balance.
You could just put a line across the top of those, and it gives you the same thing.
Right, right, but to have that also be, you know, having the perspective of what happened the year before when we look at this, that's such good information, so without some kind of history you don't know, you know, because it's very cyclic, you know, a lot of this is cyclic, and you see it, but when you can compare it over time, you can say, "Whoa, there's an anomaly."
We're hoping that the anomalies are up.
Yes, positive prefer.
So you have 200, you have $200 million more this April into last April? You're out collecting a little bit more money? What are you doing?
The bulk of that is the hospital construction fund.
Okay, so you're sitting on some money.
That Mr. Dursley and Mr. Powers snatched from the Bank of New York Mellon over there.
Oh, okay, I see. Put it in their bank.
Struggle.
Put it in your bank instead of their bank.
Yes, sir.
That was good. And then I see Cal Trust is still a little high on a couple of things over what you're doing.
They are.
But they've got some different.
They are a challenge.
But they've got.
As I've mentioned before, they aren't rated triple AF, they're double AF. They have a five-year horizon, which means they can go out five years.
They can go out and get some little bit more. But I was going to, what I was going to say is, because you're so limited on what you can do, you're really close. You guys are doing a great job when you don't, because that longer yields gets you a lot more money, so, longer time periods.
It's.
I know you're still challenged to want to beat it.
I do not believe in picking benchmarks just because you can beat them.
No, I think it's great. I mean, but it just goes to show you, you can be as highly rated and only miss by just a little bit, so that's great.
Any other questions?
This is a receiving file.
Yes, it is, and thank you again. We have a motion, a receiving file, and a second. Please vote. And that will pass.
No, she doesn't say anything, but she's doing all the work, so that's.
That's right. All right, that passes. Thank you for that excellent report, sir. Always good to hear from you. And, Board Members, five-minute break before we start all these other items. Five minutes, I'm on time. Chair?
No. He smiled at me.
I asked if I should be scared, they said, yeah. Okay, we're back to 11 o'clock, and we're going to start with item 53, and this is our public hearing on service charges, adoptions, or resolutions, and I'm going to open the public hearing for all of these items. That way I won't forget to open it. We'll open it for all of these, and then all of these being 53 through, 58, okay? And good morning. Yes, it is.
Good morning. Good morning, Chair Long, Board Members, Mr. Powers, I'm Janice Turner with the Public Works Agency, and I get to kick off the 11 o'clock marathon of, I think, 11 board items. I will be brief. This is a routine annual item for the continuation of service charges for the Lynn Ranch and Castle Canejo street sweeping.
Move approval.
Thank you.
There is a motion and a second. Please vote. It is something we're all very familiar with, and that public hearing, yep, that passed.
What do you think? You know, sorry to give you a chance to vote. This is quick.
We just want to see another no.
What is your vote for the record? I think about that.
All right, that passes. Item 54, service charges, and this is for county service area number four.
Yes, this is for Oak Park for extended services. We are requesting to continue the same service charge and have a moment.
Move approval.
Thank you.
There is a motion and a second.
Give me a chance to vote.
And that passes, 4 zip, and then we go to item 55, and the public hearing is still open. Anyone wishing to speak on this, and this is, again, sewer charges and standby charges, and this is for service area number 29. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Long, Supervisor Foy, Supervisor Parks, Supervisor Zaragoza, Mr. Powers. As mentioned, this is a public hearing regarding the county service area 29, which operates and maintains a wastewater system in the North Coast communities of Solomar Beach, Floria Beach, Muscle Shoals, and Seaclift, and all the sewage is pumped out to the Ventura County Sewer System for treatment. At this point, staff does not recommend an increase in sewer standby charges, however, we do recommend a 10% increase in sewer service charges. Sewer suver, service charges? I should have a glass of water before I came up here. Prop 218 notices were sent to all the customers in the district on April 30th, and to my knowledge, no protest letters or phone calls have been received. CSA 29 is dependent upon sewer service charges to finance the operation and maintenance of the more than 30-year-old system, and as the system ages, the cost of operations and maintenance continues to rise, driving the increased operational costs. Additionally, the cost of having the city of Ventura process our waste continues to rise. Staff recommends your adoption of the resolution attached to staff report, authorizing us to collect the charges as part of the annual general tax rule.
I know Supervisor Bennett had to leave, but said that he didn't hear any concerns from residents and supports the action, so I'll go ahead and move the item.
Was that very, that increase 10%, what's that average? Do you have an idea?
Excuse me?
What's the average cost increase?
The average cost increase is, if you just give me a second.
I think it's pretty minimal, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, don't worry about it if you don't have it in front of you. I think it's pretty minimal, I was just curious.
Please vote. And that item passes, and thank you. Item 56, and this is for service area number three.
Yes, good morning, Board, again, Janice Turner, Public Works Agency. Again, this is for annual service charges to be collected as part of the tax rule for county service area number three, Camp Chape Road, and it's for some routine maintenance on that particular road.
And again, as Supervisor Bennett indicated, he supported this and hadn't heard any objections from his constituency, so I'll move the item.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. And that item passes. Thank you. And again, the public hearing is still open on item 57, and this is for sewer service charges.
in effect since 1996. We request your board adopt the resolution attached to the staff report, which approves the schedule of sewer service charges and the standby charges, and approve the continued collection of the charges described therein on the annual county tax rule.
Move approval.
No questions, no public motion, second. Please vote. And that passes for zip. Next up, item 58, right? 58, right. Again, the same issue on sewer service charges, connection fees, and this is for area number 34, El Rio.
Right. Essentially the same brief this morning. No rate increases, however. Recommend the continued collection of the installment payments on the county tax rule. Prop 218 does not apply to these connections, so we request your adoption of the resolution attached to the staff report, which approves the schedule of sewer service charges and the sewer connection fees for 15 and FY 15, 16.
Move approval.
There's a motion and a second. Vote. That passes also, thank you. Next up, we have item 59, which is adoption of the resolution for water standby charges, standing process charges, and water flush system.
Yes. And again, this is the public hearing regarding what Chair Long just mentioned. The water standby charges are subject to Prop 218 unless the charges already existed prior to July 1st, 1977, in which case, we're recommending that we stay with the charges that existed prior to there. Therefore, Prop 218 does not apply. We recommend your board continue to charge $46.82 per acre. Request your board adopt the resolution attached to the staff report, which approves the water standby charges and approves the continued collection of the charges described therein on the annual general county tax rule.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes for zero. Continuing on the public hearing, this is item 61, and this is Water District 16 and the Piro Sewer Collection System. And this is a little more complication to look at.
Yes, right. This district provides sewer services to the community of Piro. At this time, the staff does not recommend any increase in the sewer standby charges. However, we do recommend a 10% rate increase on the sewer service charges. Prop 218 notices were sent out to all residents in English and Spanish. The rate increase is to cover a portion of the costs associated with servicing the state revolving fund loan that was taken out to fund the treatment plant compliance upgrade and increase operations and maintenance costs. As of June 8th, 2015, the clerk of the board has received a single protest letter, which was submitted for your review.
And in looking at that and discussing this, that protest letter made a suggestion to look at tying the rates to the water usage and the water delivery in Piro is by a separate water company, Waring Water Company. So, my concern of this, of course, it is a very low-income community, but we did front finance the necessary improvement to the system out there, and we also did so looking at a proposed growth to occur in that community with approved area plan. And, of course, the economy, the economics just haven't created that growth area yet. But it's still entitled, and at some point, it will turn around, and there will be some that will help to spread the cost over the entire community. So, no further protests on this. I'll move the recommended action. And the community has been briefed. Please vote. And that passes for zip. Item 62, Water Works District 38.
At long last, here we are with the public hearing on the adoption of the rules and regulations for Ventura County Water Works District 38. Lake Sherwood Community Services District was formed on March 24th, 1983. On November 19th, 2014, the LAFCO Commission of Ventura County adopted a resolution calling for the reorganization of Lake Sherwood Community Services District by divesting the district of the power to provide potable water and subject this provision to the confirmation of the voters in the area. On May 5th, 2015, the registered voters residing within the proposed district boundaries approved the formation of the district in a special election. On June 4th, 2015, LAFCO finalized the formation with a certificate of completion when that was recorded. The district will begin providing water service on July 1st, 2015. As described in the staff report, we're in the process of reviewing and updating the rules and regulations of Lake Sherwood Community Services District with the intent of incorporating them with the other water works districts that we manage. However, due to the time constraints, we request your board adopt the rules and regulations included in Exhibit 1, which they contain a few minor administrative changes, which were highlighted in the board letter, for the newly established Water Works District 38. Additionally, we request that the audit controller be authorized to process the financial transactions required to transfer all assets, liabilities, and equities, including monies held in trust from the Lake Sherwood Community Services District to Water Works District 38 effective 1 July.
And I am really happy to be able to make a motion to do this. I'm very glad that this really describes how government can be flexible and be representative of the people. And this is something that has a lot of bureaucracy behind it, but it was something that was definitely something that served the residents, and it met the needs of the residents. And I just want to thank you, Dave, and also Josie Scholl from your office for her hard work, and also Reddy Piccola, who's not with our county anymore, but he really got the ball rolling, and also my assistant, Damon Wing, who came up with the idea and has assisted with the coordination. So, a lot of hard work to get to where we are, but I think it really does, is a really good fit for the community, so my appreciation.
There's a lot of heavy lifting on this, Supervisor. We have a motion and a second. Congratulations, please vote. And that passes for zero, and the public hearing is now closed on those public hearing items. Thank you. And we'll go to item 63, recommendation of Supervisor Parks.
Right, and that's kind of a companion of what we just did.
It is.
Of forming the Water Works District, and now we're forming an advisory committee for that Water Works District. Basically, the citizens that are currently on the community service district will be appointing three of those, in addition, adding two new members. One is Mr. Bianchi, and he'll have a two-year term, and also a Mr. Scarron, who will have a two-year term. So, we will have staggered terms. And I thank them because some of this stuff isn't all that exciting, you know, that they would want to be involved, and I appreciate their volunteering, and they have served us well, those who have been on, and I know the new ones will too.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes for zero. Thank you very much. Okay, board, one item before we take a lunch break, and that's our correspondence agenda. Items 75, 6, and 77. Some motion and a second. Please vote. And the correspondence is now acted upon, and we have no closed session. You're on a string here.
1:30.
And we have a 1:30. We'll be back for, so we'll have lunch break until 1:30. Thank you. Look at that, look at that timing. Woo-hoo. And Mr. CEO, you carried this forward, so if you'd introduce it.
Will do. Thank you, Chair Long. Yes, at your board's May 12 meeting, you asked our office to work with DPR, Department of Pesticide Regulations for California, in particular Director Leahy's office, to invite him down, see if he could come down and speak to your board directly and answer some questions on pesticide air monitoring here locally. And we really appreciate the fact that Director Leahy did coordinate the meeting, and he's here with his team here today to make a presentation to your board and to answer your questions. So, we really appreciate you being here. At the same time, your board also asked us and the Agricultural Commissioner and APCD to look into the possibility of conducting some pesticide air monitoring here locally. And we have reviewed that and given you a brief report before Mr. Leahy comes up.
If you could get the PowerPoint up, that first one for the 1:30. Chair Long, members of the board, CEO Powers, as Mike said, your office asked us to work with the Agricultural Commissioner and APCD to see if we could do locally initiated pesticide monitoring and whether the cost of that and the timing of that, most importantly, would be more quickly than those currently directed by the Department of Pesticide Regulation. I think you'll recall at the time, it was recommended that the actual sampling be done by the APCD, since they are experts, are local experts in sampling, and then the results of that either be sent to a local lab or the Air Resource Board for analysis, and then finally, that we would give that analysis to the Department of Pesticide Regulation, given their expertise in interpreting the results of that. That's still the approach we're taking. Now, we flushed out, we wanted to just touch upon two components that day, flush out some additional costs. We've come up with or finalized some approximate costs, so I'm gonna ask Mike Vegas from Air Pollution Control to come up and touch upon that, and then we'll talk about the timing aspect of it. So, Mike, maybe you could just quickly, and we just have one slide here, we'll go over very quickly.
Chair Long, members of the board, Mike Powers, Mike Vegas, Air Pollution Control Officer. As you can see, the sampling cost, which, this is the field work to go out and collect the air samples in basically stainless steel canisters, and it's gonna be about $220 a sample, and rough estimate, you're looking at about 100 samples a year. Now, the equipment, we worked with the Air Resources Board, and it looks like equipment purchase, about $25,000, that'd be a one-time charge, and that includes additional canisters, shipping boxes, ice, you know, I mean, blue ice for setting it up to Air Resources Board or a local lab. Testing looks about $500 a sample, that's an Air Resources Board cost. And it may be possible, I've got those methods that were developed by the Air Resources Board, I've sent them over to a local lab, and they think they may be able to do the testing, and it might actually come at a slightly lower cost, although you kind of have to trade ARB's credibility if we use a private lab. With that, I think we've got DPR committed to monitoring throughout this year, so I think this is something that we'd look at should DPR decide to stop monitoring. We could look at this in the 2016 timeframe. The last thing I'd like to add is, I did talk to the data people up at the Air Resources Board, and they said, basically, the raw data that they provide to DPR, that DPR then analyzes, this raw data would not be very easy for us to interpret at all at our level. So, that's just something to keep in mind. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions at this time?
If you did this, I understand, I see the cost. Are you comfortable with this? I mean, does it put you outside your kind of scope of what you guys do?
We're not, yeah, I said it in a nutshell. Air Resources Board has a special projects monitoring branch. We have a monitoring division where we're kind of, you know, basically jack of all trades. So, yes, the state has more expertise in this than a local air district. And the other thing you have to keep in mind is, since, I think, the farming community is working very well in doing a lot of this fumigation on weekends, which is very good from the school's perspective, from an exposure standpoint, it basically means that my staff is gonna be working on weekends, and like, most of the time when you work people overtime, it's fine for a few months, and it become, it can really wear on staff if you're doing it year-round.
Question I have, two, one in regards to when you would be testing, the assumption would be when they're spraying. There's also the ability to do it during the week when the kids are there, which is also an important time to be testing. The question I have is, when you talk about expertise, is the expertise that the Air Resource Board may have that you don't have, is it in the actual collection of it or in the deciphering of it, if you will?
Well, the field work, we have expertise collecting those samples, just as well as ARB could do it, we could do the field work.
And that's what is being asked of you, isn't it?
Yes, I think that there was also a look at, basically, taking those canisters, analyzing them, coming back with a concentration. That's the work that ARB, as a laboratory, conducts at this time, and it's possible that we can have a local lab do that. Now, interpreting the data, that's where you're really getting into scientists, epidemiologists, and that's where DPR and state agencies, such as the Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, have that expertise.
And Supervisor Foy was mentioning your comfort zone and just doing what would be required in terms of gathering the, you know, the air samples.
Yes, we're very comfortable doing that work. As a matter of fact, when this site was initially moved from the Camarillo Airport to Rio Mesa High School, we did the field work for the first couple of months until DPR and ARB worked everything out.
Well, it's good to know who's got which expertise, so we make sure we use the experts.
But, Madam Chair, Mike, but you do other sampling of other industries also, right?
We do sampling for a regional basis.
Regional basis.
With respect to smog, and we also do toxics monitoring at Simi Valley High School on behalf of the state. And that's very similar, and we also do something called photochemical assessment monitoring, the PAMs program for the federal government, and that's using these canisters, very simple.
So, this would be similar to that?
Yeah, it would be very similar to us working with canisters for other constituents.
But somebody else analyzes the?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I guess you also brought up something in your comments. If we went to a different lab, would we have to get that lab certified, or we're just gonna say we're not certified results? What are you saying there?
My understanding is this lab is, I need to check their certification and find out, because right now, they actually are doing the PAMs work for us, so they're certified by federal EPA. So, I just need to see how that, if that transfers over to working with something such as pesticides.
And just finally, the goal of this suggestion was to see that we can get the information in a more timely manner. Do you think that that would accomplish this?
I think we would have to work with DPR, basically, to come up with a, you know, basically, how long is it gonna take ARB or the local lab to complete their analysis, get all the information to DPR or some other agency that could look at it and get that feedback to us.
And importantly, getting the feedback is where we've had the laps.
That's where it really is, exactly. Because you want to know what the result of the monitoring was.
And before turning it over to Director Leahy, we did want to touch upon the timeliness. We have posed the question to DPR whether they, A, would be available, and B, could do it more quickly. They haven't.
And that's very similar. And we also do something called photochemical assessment monitoring, the PAMS program for the federal government. And that's using these canisters, very simple.
So this would be similar to that?
Yeah, it would be very similar to us working with canisters for other constituents.
But somebody else analyzes the?
Yes.
Okay.
So I guess you also brought up something in your comments. If we went to a different lab, would we have to get that lab certified? Or we're just going to say we're not certified results? What are you saying there?
My understanding is this lab is, I need to check their certification and find out. Because right now, they actually are doing the PAMS work for us. So they're certified by federal EPA. So I just need to see how that, if that transfers over to working with something such as pesticides.
Okay.
And just finally, the goal of this suggestion was to see that we can get the information in a more timely manner. Do you think that that would accomplish this?
I think we would have to work with DPR, basically, to come up with a, you know, basically, how long is it going to take ARB or the local lab to complete their analysis, get all the information to DPR or some other agency that could look at it and get that feedback to us?
And importantly, getting the feedback is where we've had the lapse to.
That's where it really is, exactly. Because you want to know what the result of the monitoring was.
And before turning it over to Director Leahy, we did want to touch upon the timeliness. We have posed the question to DPR whether they, A, would be available and B, could do it more quickly. They haven't had the opportunity to respond to that. Hopefully, there'll be some touching on that in their presentation today. But that information is still yet to come. So that includes our portion of the update this morning. And with that, we'll turn it over to.
Okay. Okay. Director, hold a moment, please. A supervisor would like to say something.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to share a couple of words before Director Leahy comes up. You know, I just wanted to share that that we have been working on this issue for quite a long time, for about a year and so forth. And just for the director's information, you know, we worked with a coalition of concerns, individuals, representatives from MICOB, the Mystical Community, CAUZ, Elites, Campesinas, Planned Parenthood. And also, we also were working with the ag commissioner, with our public health representative, Dr. Levin, and also Regal from the, from our health agency. And we had a meeting prior to this whole issue coming up with the ag commissioner. We had also a meeting with an individual by name, Mike Stubblefield, from El Rio resident and also a Sierra Club Board member. And they were sharing the concerns they had about pesticides and fumigants. And this is before an article came out in The Star from the Center for Investigative Reporting. And when that report came out in The Star, I had a tremendous amount of individuals call me regarding the article that came out on public health. And consequently, as a result of that, I brought it before the Board of Supervisors. So I asked the commissioner and the public health to give us a presentation. So on March 24th, our ag commissioner and county staff provided a report to the Board of Supervisors on pesticide applications in the area. Then on April the 7th, Supervisor Bennett and myself recommended some policies, some policies for the ag commissioner to follow, which our board supported. And recently, of course, I had a, or the commissioner had two meetings right here at the county center and also at the El Rio High School. And I provided testimony, and we heard, I know Randy was there, and Sharla was there, and Mr. Riordan was there from your office, and Director Leahy. And I heard a lot of testimony from the growers, students, parents, and many farm workers testified about health concerns at the time. And then I also met with Bobby Jones from Jones Farms. And Bobby Jones mentioned to me that he does not use 13D in his farm at all. He does not use that. So he gave me the information. I met with him. And then a day later, so I met with the strawberry commissioner, commission representative from Trical. And they're from Hollister, and they were talking about the safeguards they have. In fact, we met over, met over in Camarillo. And they were sharing with us about the safety concerns that they have and how they have a computerized vehicle and tractor that emits the, or helps with the emission of the, or the application of this pesticide, the fumigants. Very interesting and very understanding of all the safety measures that they take. And then also, I had a meeting with Director, or phone conference with Director Brian Leahy and also with Randy over the phone regarding the regulations that we have there. And of course, you know, one thing that I did too is additionally, the, those individuals, CAUZ and MICOB and those representatives want to have a meeting with you after this meeting. And they're really grateful to meet with them. And again, I'm learning quite a bit from listening, encouraged, being encouraged by both sides, the farm workers and also the growers. And I still believe right now, looking at it, that we need to create a balance to protect our public and to protect also the, and also work with the growers. Because, you know, they, if I mentioned before, you know, the growers provide the work and our employees are employed, which is, I think, is very significant. You know, has a lot to do with purchasing the homes and buying their, sending the kids to school and so forth. But we need also to protect our children and our families, our teachers and our students and all our workers here in the, in the county of Ventura. And especially around these, we have several schools that are surrounded by ag, and we need to find a balance. So that's what I'd like to share at this time. And then later on, I hopefully maybe have some questions and maybe some recommendations. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, now. Supervisor?
I just, I've had some communication, just for the benefit of, I had some communication with Director Leahy shortly after our meeting here and well before we had the official invitation to go to him. And he was nice enough to take my call and ask me to send my questions up to him. I sent those questions up to him. And I know he's, I assume that he's going to be prepared to try to answer those questions, you know, as we go forward. I just want to emphasize that, from our standpoint, we appreciate you coming down. And our goal here is to try to make sure the public has confidence in everybody who's a role to play. The Agricultural Commissioner, Department of Pesticide Regulation, the Board of Supervisors. And so the intention of these questions is to try to understand what, at the time, was pretty confusing information for us. So that's, that's the goal here. And hopefully, what comes out of this is people having greater confidence. We don't want to get to the point where, which I'm afraid has happened to some extent with Dogger, where the public is really starting to question the regulatory agency. So thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Could I just add to that also reading, even in the Los Angeles Times, where it's saying this area has the highest exposure to schoolchildren in the state of California. That's concerning. And we want to, you know, address that so we don't have that issue.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming in.
I have some prepared remarks that I will read.
Okay.
Or get off the task. But, you know, I think to begin with, one, I want to make a real commitment that we will improve communications. You know, communicating science is never easy. Scientists are not the most smooth-tongued folks who ever met in my life. It's, timing is real important. So we will, we'll have your report, I think, sometime by July or so. And so that's a real commitment. What we've really figured out is trying to communicate risk is really challenging. We're not the only ones with that issue. But we, that is a real commitment going forward. You know, on a personal note, first off, I have to tell you, my sister lives here. Her kids went through Oxnard Schools. You know, this is important. I've been here for a long time, visited a lot, seen the changes over the last decades. And so this is real. You know, I'm a parent, grandparent. If someone told me my children were at risk, I would be very concerned, and I would do something. Sorry. My personal background, you know, I was one of the first organic farmers in the country. I was growing 900 acres of wildlife-friendly rice when the Lumbergs, our neighbors, told us that the way we grow rice was organic, we'd get twice the price. But we were very concerned about, you know, chemistry back then, in 1980, it was a very different world than today. You know, we've seen remarkable progress in how we address pesticides. So I'm going to actually go through that. My statement is basically to describe our mission, because I think that's important. And I want to describe a little bit about how pesticides are regulated in society, why we use pesticides. I want to go over 13D, the chemical, the fumigant that's been in the news, and what we're doing with it. And then I want to talk a little bit about schools. I'll have a few suggestions about moving forward. And then Randy Scaw was going to give a very technical presentation that is also helps explain a very complex program. But our mission is fairly simple. It is to protect human health and the environment as legal pesticides are applied. We also have a third component, which is to foster reduced-risk approaches to pest management. We're a science-based organization. We have about 400 individuals. Most of them are scientists. We have well over 100 PhDs. They tend to be medical toxicologists, environmental scientists. We have veterinarians, etymologists, industrial hygienists. A recent audit by the National Academy of Science looking at our program noticed that we are really excellent at discovering how a pesticide enters into the body or the environment and then developing mitigations around that to protect as the chemicals are being used. We have a very strong working relationship with the county ag commissioners. We are the only state in the nation that has a county ag commissioner program. They have a very challenging job because they report to you. They report to the Secretary of Agriculture at CDFA for the work they do for them. And then we pay them some $26, $27 million a year to do their pesticide program. And they report to us on that. They have some 300 biologists in the field, and they conduct over 19,000 inspections statewide. It's more money and more people than US EPA puts in the nation. It's a very important program. As I said, our main focus is protection of human health. Farm workers is really the core of our program, and now the community. But it's everyone. It's janitors, it's daycare providers, everyone that is using chemistry, pesticides, is what we're looking at. And that means we're looking at all of society. Pesticides are probably the most regulated item in commerce. We know more about a pesticide and how it's going to break down and what it's going to do to the environment and human health than any other item in commerce, even more than pharmaceuticals. Pharmaceuticals don't really look at how the environmental fate of their products as they break down. So it's a strong regulatory program. And it's made remarkable progress in the last 30 years. We at DPR, we have a very unique system. No other state has the kind of program that we do. We review every chemistry, all the pesticides for California-specific conditions. You know, I farmed in Nebraska as well as here, and I practice law in different states. I can tell you California is unique. You know, nowhere else do we have hundreds of workers in one small area. When I was on a tractor in Nebraska to the curvature of the earth, you'd see two or three other tractors. Here, you might have, you know, 200 or 300 employees out working on crops that are being harvested year-round. We have very unique conditions that we protect for. And, you know, by their very nature, pesticides are dangerous. I mean, we use them because we want to kill a pest. Pests, on the other hand, are very dangerous as well. They will do incredible damage to crops. They will kill, you know, they will do, you know, more, a lot of, all of society has had to rely on pesticides. Modern life relies on pesticides for our food, for our public health, for our resource management. And so, if we have something we have to have, we have to have a strong regulatory program. And the challenge then is to determine how is that pesticide going to do the job it needs to do and stay on target and not move off-site? That's probably our biggest challenge. If we can manage the risk, then our goal is to keep the food production here in California, here locally, make sure that that production is here, the jobs are here, the tax base is here. Because if it's not, it'll be chased off to Mexico or somewhere else where these kinds of protections aren't in place. And usually, we can do that. That's our goal. And we do that through the use of science, through data, through information. We use good risk management practices. And we've made remarkable progress in pesticides over the years. It's very different today in the fields than it was when I was farming in the early 80s. So a strong regulatory program is really the only key to keep these things delivering the services they need to provide. Here, here in Ventura County, you know, within a few generations, you've gone from dry land farming and low-value crops to incredibly high-value crops. The only thing keeping agriculture in this area is the high-value crops. High-value crops mean high risk. Pesticides are really an insurance tool. So they are really, the growers here rely on them. The fumigants, only if, there's a very small percentage of the acreage use fumigants, but it tends to be these high-value crops, especially along the coast. When I became the director of DPR about three years ago, I made fumigants my number-one priority. You know, it was very clear with industry that that's what we were going to do. We set out and told them we were going to, the department had been looking at fumigants, but I pushed it. We're pushing hard, and we're going to do things. And so, like I said, the industry knows that. We've been very open about that. And we're really pushing it as fast as we can. Of all the fumigants that we regulate, 13D, the program that I inherited was probably the most complicated. It was just complicated. But it was highly protective. No other state, nowhere else has ever tried to protect against long-term exposure. But that's where we, that's what was developed for me. And that's what we're going to continue to improve. The reality is that this existing regulatory program did put very meaningful protections in place. The system included the use of waivers. The department never violated its own system because waivers were part of that system. At Rio Mesa High School, air monitoring levels were never above health risk targets. When they reached our regulatory target, that told us it was time to act. That regulatory target is our buffer zone so that we know that our program needs to be looked at and do something. And that's what we did. When it reached that level, that's when they ended the waiver program. We have a risk assessment that's underway. By the end of the year, we'll have a new regulatory scheme that'll be a little less complicated, more straightforward. But the kids, the kids weren't at risk here. But this is challenging, I can tell you that. But no more waivers. That's gone. Recently, we came down here for listening sessions on schools. Schools are just, you know, we have a lot of kids in schools. It's like 8 million or something. We recently did some protective measures on the use of pesticides inside schools. It's actually where most of our data tells us incidences are occurring of concern. But we're going to look at a new statewide protection for the quipirophos. It's one of the things that we're worried about. We're looking at, where the last couple of years, US EPA and us have put in additional restrictions on fumigants. So these are fairly new, but the last couple of years have been really strong restrictions about when and how fumigants can be applied in your schools and other difficult-to-evacuate sites, is the term. Our air monitoring, our air monitoring, our data, our pesticide illness reports, we're the only people that have this sort of comprehensive review of illnesses to find out if there are pesticide illnesses occurring. It all tells us that, that measures currently in place are doing a good job of protecting schools, but you can almost get better. You can never have kids too safe. And what I noticed as I traveled throughout the state, I sat at schools and janitor, or cafeterias and talked to teachers and parents was, people want clarity. The county ag commissioners, staff wants clarity. A lot of these protective measures are county by county and stuff. We're going to put some basic restrictions, basic protections in place in this regulation. As I said, the listening sessions, we've conducted, the public comment period ends July 1st. We hope to have some measures out, proposals out by the end of the year and then sometime next year have them in place. As I said, we will make a commitment to communicate, we will try to get things done a little quicker. The goal is, once we determine there's a risk, a harm, to put protective measures in place quicker. We're doing that with quipirophos. We bypassed our usual process and we're putting measures in place quicker because we know we need to. And we're figuring out how to do that. Getting close to being done here. The regulation of pesticides, though, it's got to be kept in science. It's got to be kept in data and it's got to be the use of thoughtful risk management. That's how the system's been set up and it works. If we go to emotion, if we go to fear, we really put our food supply at risk, we put public health at risk, we put resource management and water delivery, all that at risk. We've got a system that works, it can get better, it's gotten better and it'll continue to get better. So like I said, keep it in science. There's a lot of things, though, that we could do. I think part of why we did the schools was to start communications. You know, land use is, is, is an incredible decision. When you plow a school down in the middle of farm fields, you build in conflict. We did a series of four seminars throughout the state where we looked at different regions and about conflicts with the urban ag interface and what, every one of them was land use planning. You know, some counties have decided that they're going to require new development to build in a buffer zone that they think is comfortable and protective. You know, that's a good idea. We have a SOAR program here that's incredible. You could use some of that SOAR money maybe to look at how do we build protections in existing places? You know, but I can tell you, even that's not easy. Organic farming requires the use of pesticides. If you don't manage land, you create challenges with vermin and disease and whatnot. It's not easy, but it can be done. IPM, Integrated Pest Management, we really need to start thinking about how we design our buildings, our schools, you know, so that we don't have pest pressures or that the pest pressures don't get out of control and do economic or health damage. So anyways, that's my ideas. We have, we have more, but it's going to take the community. It's going to take a lot of discussion. You know, we don't, we haven't done the kind of research for 50 or 60 years that helps us to understand a biological-based agriculture, to help us understand how natural systems work. You know, we've just looked at fertilizers and pesticides as an approach. It feeds us, but it has other consequences. How do we get to a better place? You know, the, the markets have changed, consumers are starting to ask for more, but that's still a tiny segment of the market. We need real research to get us the tools that we need so that we can have that, you know, reliable food system. And, public health. What we're finding is most of our illnesses are coming from the application of things like antimicrobials. So it's janitors. A lot of the progress we made in pesticides was because all the applicators are licensed, trained professionals on the agricultural side. We're finding that's not the case on the non-ag side. We did a study with University of California in San Francisco on daycare providers. They don't understand how to use antimicrobials. They don't understand how to use the chemistry that they use because they haven't been trained. They're not trained in the schools and they're not, you know, and we're not giving them good education. So we're really working on that. We need for you to ensure that your janitors and people using pesticides on the non-ag side have that same level of training and expertise as the agricultural people do. And so with that, I would really like to introduce Randy Segawa. He'll go through a technical explanation of the same thing I said and then we'll entertain questions and we'll be back.
Okay. Thank you.
Just wanted to ask this one.
Sure.
Because one thing, this whole thing came about was safety. And you just said the kids were never at risk?
Well, that's right. The kids are safe. I mean, I don't like using the word "safe" and pesticides in the same sentence because it doesn't send the kind of message you want. You want people to be very worried when they use pesticides, but they were safe.
Yeah, because we understand that, Matt. And I was glad to hear you talk about, because we're, you know, trying to understand, because the ag committee does such a great job trying to balance their training and what you're saying is the training is done well in the ag community.
Education works. You know, it really works. And so does enforcement, you know, and so does technology, you know, long-term. You know, we gave, one of the things I didn't say was, I formed a working committee looking at what are the barriers to getting off of fumigants? How is the strawberry producers going to grow strawberries without fumigants? And we came up with a, a great list of what needs to happen. We need to understand soil health. We've spent a few million dollars of our own money to stimulate this. They are trying. They really see that if they want to survive here in California, they need to find a new approach. Right now, 3% of strawberries are inorganic by land, much less by production because the yields aren't the same. Same people that are growing organic are growing conventional. The reason why they don't go to organic is they know they cannot. I know, I have been on farms here in this, this county that are remarkable. They do all the things organic producers do, but they know that if they went to organic production, they would lose their crop. The soil pathogens and the non-ending threats to food production, you know, need, mean that we need tools and we have to do it right. You know, hunger is not very nice, especially, and, and, you know, food? Oh, I'm getting the message. So anyways, this is, this is very important. This is something I have thought about for a long time. We know that the only way we're going to move forward is to work with you all and make sure that people know that they're being taken care of and we want those improvements.
Madam Chair, Brian, you mentioned something and I'm not sure if I got it correctly, but that you review illnesses?
Pardon?
You review, the DPR reviews illnesses?
Yes.
Potentially from maybe pesticides and fumigants?
Here's how that system works. We have a, is, an excellent data review system. So we, by law, every physician treating someone that suspects it may be a pesticide illness has to report that. It's like dog bites. We review workers' comp claims to see if there's pesticide illnesses. We have a very strong relationship with poison control. We put messages on the radio and elsewhere to letting farm workers know that if they have any kind of pesticide illness or poisoning, if they've been exposed to pesticides, they're supposed to call us, Poison Control, the county ag commissioner. We have a, basically, it's a zero-tolerance program and if any and every claim to pesticide illness is investigated.
The reason I'm asking that, because it was shared by some of the concerned citizens that potentially some of those illnesses might be relevant to the pesticides and, and do the doctors share that information or is it HIPAA laws are involved with that or?
They, they are, by law, they're supposed to. We give, one of our sister agencies, over a million dollars a year to do physician training. It would be nice if physician training in med school included pesticide illness. You know, and that, this isn't just agriculture. You know, my own barber managed to shut down his kidneys and almost kill himself because he used some of the stuff he bought at the grocery store. And, you know, and that never got reported. He told me and then we called the county. But that's required and so we, we try to capture those. It's the only way we improve. This, this program uses data. We create data, we, we figure out new ways to gather this data so that we can constantly improve our program. But, you know, pests, people, pesticides are, people, it creates a fear, which is healthy, but it's, it's, and people want to blame things and pesticides are an easy target. But never underestimate, just, you don't want exposure and that's what we don't either. Should we do Randy or do you have more questions?
No, no, why don't we do Randy and then we'll open up for some questions and we have public speaking cards also. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Yes, put up the slides, please. Good afternoon. I'm Randy Segawa. I'm a special advisor with the Department of Pesticide Regulation and I'm going to take you some of the, through, take you through some of the more technical issues that are involved here. First, give you an overview of how DPR evaluates, monitors and regulates pesticides statewide. And then next, focus on particular issues here in Ventura County, particularly pertaining to fumigants, and then talk about some work in progress. First, our overview. Three organizations regulate the sales and use of pesticides in California. That's the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, the Department of Pesticide Regulation, and the County Agricultural Commissioners. And of course, I'm here to talk mainly about DPR and it is one of seven boards or departments within the California Environmental Protection Agency. That includes the Air Resources Board, Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment and a few other agencies as well. And as Brian says, our mission is to protect the human health and environment by regulating pesticide sales and use and fostering reduced-risk pest management. DPR has a very comprehensive program to regulate pesticides. It's primarily based on science. And so, we have a group that evaluates and what we call register pesticides. That is, it reviews and approves for sale pesticide products before they can be used here in California. That's done in conjunction with US EPA. We of course have some very stringent requirements on use of pesticides that we and the county ag commissioners enforce. Part of that program is to license and certify people to apply certain types of pesticides. We monitor pesticides as well, not only in air but in water, pesticides in food and other media. We also have programs to take that monitoring data, assess the risks resulting from pesticide exposures and if necessary, develop measures to reduce those exposures. Another piece of information that we collect is pesticide use report information. Since 1990 here in California, all agricultural applications have to be reported to the ag commissioner. So we get information on what was applied, how much was applied, when it was applied, who applied it, and we find this information very useful, both for our monitoring programs as well as assessing health risks and developing mitigation measures. And then finally, we do have programs to evaluate and encourage the use of pesticide Of course, for this presentation, I know you're particularly interested about monitoring that we're doing, so I will be focusing on that. In particular, DPR has routine monitoring programs to check pesticides in food, surface water as well as groundwater. Pesticide product content, that is, we collect samples of actual pesticide products to make sure that they contain what they're supposed to contain. And as Brian mentioned briefly, we do compile pesticide illness information as well. We do all those on an ongoing basis. On a case-by-case basis, we also do air monitoring, conduct worker exposure studies and do investigations as well. In addition to this work by DPR, there are other agencies. The chemical manufacturers, the registrants also conduct their own studies as well. UC and other universities conduct pesticide monitoring as well. For this presentation, I'm now going to be focusing on our air monitoring that is done. But first, I want to talk about how we, at least in a preliminary sense, evaluate that pesticide air monitoring data. First off, there are no air quality standards for pesticides in air. That is, levels at which we would be required to take some regulatory actions. Those kinds of standards do not exist, neither at the federal level nor at the state level. So since there are no air quality standards, we developed what we call health screening levels and regulatory target concentrations. And these are two different animals here.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Since it's technical, I'm afraid if I don't ask the question at the time on them.
Sure.
When you say there are no air quality standards for pesticides in the air?
Yes.
Is that because there is no level that, no matter how concentrated the pesticide in the air is, it's, the science says there's not a risk or is it because there's, for some other reason, nobody's ever?
It's actually a legal reason. For instance, federal law has air quality standards for ozone. If you exceed the ozone standard, then the state and air pollution control just are, are supposed to do certain things.
So there's no standard because nobody's ever set an illegal standard?
Correct.
But there's no science that says, there's no standard because there's, we've, because no matter how much the pesticide is in the air, but it's, all the tests say that it's safe?
Correct.
It's more that there hasn't been a legal standard to set?
Correct.
And who is it that needs to set that? Is that EPA? Is that, or is that the legislative body that first says we want a standard for that? Or is it a regulatory agency that says we want a standard established?
Right. It would require new legislation, either at the federal or state level.
So it would actually require legislation to establish?
Correct.
Health standards?
Yeah.
It's, okay. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, so I, this does get kind of complicated. Have any questions, feel free to interrupt.
Thank you.
So, we have health screening levels and these regulatory target concentrations, sort of as a surrogate or substitute for these air quality standards. Briefly, the health screening level we use as a trigger for DPR to take a closer look at what's causing the high air concentrations. So if we exceed, if one of our air monitoring samples exceeds a health screening level, then we would take a look at what pesticide applications occur during the time of the monitoring, how much was applied, what were the weather conditions at the time, as well as take a look, more detailed look at the possible, potential health effects from those air concentrations. So again, exceeding the health screening level is sort of a trigger for us to do a more detailed evaluation.
Randy?
Yes.
What triggers a, a screening, for example, individuals that were exposed to a certain amount of exposure? Is that what it is?
It's coming from our air monitoring data.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So consequently, then you go out and, and determine if somebody was exposed to a higher level than?
We actually would determine whether or not we, let's say, for instance, we exceed the health screening level, we do our detailed evaluation and we make a decision that we need to do something about that. Exposure in fact is too high. Then we would then either develop new requirements or revise the existing requirements to reduce those exposures. So the, the second sort of soaps to, for air quality standards are regulatory target concentration. We develop regulatory target concentrations after we complete comprehensive evaluation of the health effects and exposures to a particular pesticide. This is what we call our risk man, risk assessment process. So we do a comprehensive analysis of the risk and then develop a target concentration for our regulatory program. So we would set up requirements. We would set up buffer zones or other requirements to try and achieve that target concentration. And so if we exceed the target concentration, it's an indication that we might need to change our regulatory requirements. Okay? I know this was a particular issue that you guys were interested in, so yes, question?
Excuse me. So, you know, the issue at, at question here is the 70-year exposure?
Yeah.
Point 1.4 target that has been communicated to us in a wide variety of ways, sometimes communicated to us that it was the one-year target?
Right.
That the one-year target is that, I see in, in more recent memos, you, you talk about it differently. But for example, I read in a memo that you have, it says, assuming the two-year average accurately represents a 70-year lifetime, the cancer risk from 13D has slightly exceeded DPR's regulatory target. What does a 70-year target mean? Does it mean you, you, if you exceed it one year, that it kicks in this review for modification? Or is it two years? Or how, how long do you have to exceed a 70-year target or do you have to get to 70 years?
Right, yeah.
And obviously, you don't because you've, you're making a change now.
Right.
But what's the length of time?
Yeah. I actually got slides that discuss it in more detail, but briefly, what we do is that we've now been monitoring some four or five years. And so, in the case of 13D and estimating the cancer risk, we take an overall average for the entire four-year period to determine whether or not we might exceed that 70-year target concentration. So it's not, we don't judge it on a yearly basis. We judge it by the entire monitoring period, whether that's two years, four years or 10 years.
But, but what is it? What's the science that you've decided or what's the regulatory time period that you've decided? If, if you have a 70-year target and it's exceeded for 18 months, like you just said, we don't do it for a year. If it's exceeded for 18 months, you say, okay, now it's, that's, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to say, hey, 18 months, and it's been over every month for 18 months. Let's, I'm just giving a hypothetical. Or is it two years? Or is it, you just said two years, four years, 10 years. That doesn't, that doesn't create very much clarity?
Right, right.
And I know that, that you're committed to clarity.
Right.
So, how do we, I mean, how do we respond? And, and I don't mean that facetiously. I mean, what is, if you walk out of here, I need to be able to explain to people, well, the 70-year target, if it's exceeded for two years, then you're going to do something. What is it?
Yeah. Well, number one, these are target concentrations. They're not bright lines. And so if we exceed point 1.4, doesn't automatically determine that it's unsafe.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, okay. So there's uncertainty and assumptions in all the work that's being done here. And all of the screen levels and regulatory targets are based on toxicology studies done on animals. Okay? And so in the?
I'm, I'm sorry, but I know you have a, you have a significant presentation, so if you, if you feel like you need to, to continue this line of explanation, but does this, is this going to lead to a, a specific time period that you exceed?
Yes, right.
Or it's going to be an explanation of why they're?
Right. So in the case of the point 1.4, it's based on an animal study conducted for the lifetime of the animal. So you dose the animal with a certain concentration of 13D for its entire life. At the end of its life, then you examine that animal and see what the health effects were caused by it, including cancer. And so it's very likely that animal got cancer prior to the end of its lifetime, but you don't know whether that occurred at the beginning of its lifetime or at the end of its lifetime. And you also don't know what the exact concentration was when that cancer occurred. And so again, we have to make an assumption that sometime during that animal's lifetime, it got cancer. And so that's how we set our target level, is based on a lifetime exposure.
And do you have that animal data? Do you have that animal data? Have you done that data yet?
Yes. That's what the point 1.4 is based on.
I'm going to withdraw this question right now, but I think you understand the question. I'm still, I, I don't, I don't, I still need an answer to that one.
It might become clear once I get to the slide.
Why don't we move ahead with your presentation? Thank you.
Okay. So, once we complete our air monitoring, or as the monitoring data comes in, then we determine whether or not we need to develop new measures to reduce exposures or revise our existing ones. And so we use the data to develop measures to not only protect the public, but workers, people handling and applying the pesticides as well. We do this in consultation and review by other agencies such as US EPA, Air Resources Board, Office of Environmental Health Hazard Assessment, and several other agencies. If DPR implements some measures to reduce those exposures, we have three ways we can do that. We can work with the US EPA, develop changes to product labels. We often say that the label is the law. The product label describes how you comply that pesticide, what safety precautions you need to take, and a whole host of other requirements. And if you apply a pesticide in conflict with that label, then it's a violation of both federal and state law. And so we can put any new restrictions on these pesticide labels. A second way we can implement some new measures is through our rulemaking process. DPR can develop some new regulations to further restrict the use of pesticides. And third, the county agricultural commissioner can implement additional requirements on what we call restricted materials. Restricted materials are pesticides that have potential to create health or environmental problems. We designate these in state law. That is, we have to go through rulemaking to designate a pesticide as a restricted material. Currently, we have about 37 of those listed. And all restricted materials have a number of requirements that they must follow. Three key things that restricted materials requirements apply to. Those applications have to be made or supervised by a certified applicator. That is, somebody who's taken exam to make sure that they know how to correctly apply pesticides. And there's a continuing education requirement to maintain your certification. A permit is required from the county ag commissioner in order to purchase and use a restricted material. And the county ag commissioner is required to evaluate the specific application site and time of the application to make sure there won't be any undue hazard. And the commission then has the authority to approve that permit, or deny it, or condition the permit, add additional requirements before it can be applied. So that's it for the overview on how we regulate pesticides in general. Next, I want to talk about particularly fumigant pesticides in Ventura County. First off, fumigants is sort of a special class of pesticides. As you know, they are gases, and so they're highly volatile. They're normally applied at higher application rates than most other pesticides. And so these high amounts, high volatility, create the potential for people to be exposed to them. However, they also have great activity against certain types of pests, particularly weeds, certain types of diseases, nematodes in the soil. And the photo there shows experimental field, actually, where in the background there is one of the treatment plots, in the foreground is a control plot, the area of a strawberry field that has not been fumigated. And you see, it doesn't look very good. This is due to verticillium, a disease common in strawberries if you do not fumigate. The fumigants are injected into the soil prior to planting the crop, either by tractor or through drip irrigation systems, at least here in Ventura County. These are two most common methods of application. And they're usually covered with a tarp to suppress the emissions. There are a number of requirements in order to apply these fumigant pesticides. And I should back up and say, we're talking about four different chemicals here, at least in Ventura County. 1.3 Dichloropropene, or what we call 1.3D, chloropicrin, methylbromide, and methylisothiocyanate, what we call MITC. All four of these are used in Ventura County to some extent. They all have some pretty stringent requirements. You can see, they all have buffer zone distances. For the chloropicrin, methylbromide, and MITC, you can see a range of buffer zone distances there, anywhere from 25 feet to 26, 40 feet, or one-half mile. The exact buffer zone distance for any one application depends on the number of acres being fumigated, the application rate, and the fumigation method. There's also a field size limit, how many acres for any one field you can do in any one day, at least for the chloropicrin, methylbromide, and MITC. For many of those fumigants, there's also a notification and monitoring requirement if you have businesses or residences within certain distances. There's also requirements for difficult to evacuate sites, as defined on the label. And that does include schools, includes hospitals, includes prisons, and certain other sites. And so if you have these difficult to evacuate sites, depending on the size of the buffer, you can't have these kinds of sites within one-eighth mile or one-quarter mile of your application.
Randy?
Yes?
On the township, with the 1.3D for the township cap?
Yes.
Is it $90,250 per township per year?
I'm going to get that to my next slide.
Okay.
And before you go to the next slide?
Yes.
Supervisor Bennett was asking about who sets the requirements, the regulations, and what if you want to expand a buffer zone or shrink it? Who determines that?
The US EPA labels specify buffer zone sizes. In certain cases, DPRs develop more stringent buffer zones. And so they would supersede the labels specified by the label. And then since all four of these fumigants are restrict materials, then the county ag commissioner also has authority to increase the size of the buffer if he or she felt the need, or was justified in increasing that distance.
Thank you.
And then township cap. And I know that's where you have the most interest, and I'm going to talk about that in more detail next, unless you have questions about the other requirements.
Let me just ask you real quick.
Yeah.
When you, you have some of these notifications, 50 to 300 resident business, that's all dependent on what?
Yes, on the size.
Pretty big variance there.
Yeah, on the size of the buffer zone. And memory serves, if the buffer zone is like 100 feet, then you're required to notify businesses and residences they're within 50 feet.
Oh, I see.
So if the buffer zone is 200 feet, then I think it expands out, you have to notify them they're within 100 feet. So it's a sliding scale.
Oh, I see. Okay, sliding.
Yeah.
And then on the field size limit?
Yes.
So it's 60 acres, or 40 acres, or 80 acres? Does that mean if I'm a farmer, that's all I can do at my location? Or could the farmer next to me do 60 acres, and I can do 60? Or how does that work?
Yeah, it's for the individual farmer.
Just an individual?
Yes.
Why is that? Is there some reason why you just don't want that much being at one time?
Yeah. The buffer zones would get quite large if we allowed larger acreage.
I see. Okay. Great.
Township caps. That's sort of the simple term for what we call our California Management Plan. And these township caps are limits on use of 1.3D. This is unique to California. Neither US EPA nor any other states have anything like this. These are limitations within a six-by-six-mile area, based on the public land survey system. And so it's 36 square miles. There's two different caps, actually. There's an annual allocation of 90,250 pounds each year. But if there's a certain township that does not use all that 90,000 pounds, then it can be rolled over or banked for use in future years. And so if you have this reserve amount available in the bank, a township can use up to 188,500 pounds. Now, these pounds that I'm saying, these are what we call adjusted pounds. It's not the straight amount of 1.3D being applied. DPR makes adjustments to the amount applied depending on the method of fumigation, the region that's being applied to, either within the San Joaquin Valley or outside the San Joaquin Valley, and the month that the application occurs.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes.
Two, two questions. One, so are you saying that no matter how big the bank gets, regardless of the size of the bank, 180,500 pounds is the maximum in a township for any particular year?
Correct.
Can't go over that?
Correct. Unless, for the next to last bullet there, the California Management Plan does allow waivers to those limits.
Do you know if those waivers were granted in Ventura County?
They have been in the past.
Yes. All right. My other question is, is, oh, the, is it accurate what was reported to us that prior to 1995 or prior to this, there was a time period when 1.3D was actually banned?
Correct. It was under suspension in California between 1990 and 1994.
So for four years, it was under suspension, and then California started this township application limitation?
Yes. We, DPR requested that all ag commissioners suspend permits in 1990 due to some air monitoring data that we received from Air Resources Board at that time.
Will your slides here today identify for us the years there were waivers and how, what the maximum was allowed on various townships here? Or do you not have?
I don't have that kind of detail. I can get that if you'd like me to.
That would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
Does this material, if it drifts, can it accumulate on, like playground equipment?
No. It's a gas, and so it, it doesn't stick to hardly anything. Yes. And so in the past, DPR has approved waivers to these caps, but we ended that in February 2014.
Could, could you tell us, when did you begin the process of reviewing and considering ending the waivers that, that were being granted? You, you ended the waivers in February 14.
Right.
When did that process begin? Was that a six-month process, a one-year process?
We began it in 2013. I don't recall the exact time, but it was in 2013.
Okay. Thank you.
So this summarizes the township caps that we have in Ventura County. They did begin in 1995. And 2014, of course, is the latest year for which we have data. During that, what, 20-year or so period, 26 townships within Ventura County have some 1.3D use. Three of those have received waivers in the past. Most recently, 2011 through 2014, when we've done our monitoring, 15 townships have used 1.3D. And again, the same three townships have been issued waivers at least once during that time period.
So to be clear, there are three townships, that's three six-by-six-mile, that were given waivers to go over the 180,000 pounds?
It depends. Actually, Control Room, if you could click on where it says detailed 1.3D cap use? Thank you. This shows the listing of all 1.3D townships with 1.3D use in 2013 and 2014. The three townships there in orange are the ones that were issued waivers in 2013.
And why, why did they need waivers if they were not going over?
Because we were, we give waivers for two cases. One, if the township wants to go over the 180,000 pound limit. A second waiver is if there is no bank remaining and they still want to use some 1.3D. And so that was a case in the second one, 1-North, 21-West.
So, so there was also a waiver, there's not just a waiver if you have a bank. If you're, if you don't have anything banked up, you can still get a waiver to go over the 90,000?
Correct. And that was the case there. They went slightly over the 90,000 pounds.
And what, what is the standard for saying it's okay to give a waiver to go over 90,000 if, if there's no, if they've been using their 90,000 and not banked up anything?
Their allocation.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Do, do you know what, what is the standard that you use to determine, oh, it's okay to go over the 90,000?
That's based on DPR management decision.
Okay. Thank you.
And Randy, Rio Mesa was one of those townships that had?
Yes. You can see there about halfway down, Township 2-North, 22-West, that's where Rio Mesa is located.
And, and the other ones, the 1-16 and the 90, the first and the, what townships were those?
I'm, I'm sorry, say that again?
Okay, the two town, there's two townships, the second one and also the highlighted one.
Right, yeah. The 2-North, 21-West is another township that received a waiver.
It was in Ventura County?
Yes. These are all in Ventura County.
And do you know where those townships?
Yes. Control Room there, if you, on the right-hand side where it says 1.3D use map?
Yep.
Thank you. So this map shows the 1.3D use actually by section. This is one by one miles now, not by township. And this is the area where 1.3D is being used in Ventura County. That blue diamond sort of in the center there, that's where Rio Mesa is located. That is township, boy, that's tough to see, but the township outline is right here. Okay? The adjacent township is right here, which is the other one for which waivers were being approved. And then the third township is this one right in here.
Red Camarillo.
Yes. So it's the Camarillo-Oxnard area.
Right. Now, again, this, this is a fumigant that is injected into the ground.
Yes.
It is not an aerial spray.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah. So, yeah. Question?
I just, you showed us the waivers for 13 and 14, nothing over 180,000. But there were times when they were over 180,000 in years before 2013. Is that correct?
Yes. Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
So Control Room, can you click on back to 1.3D cap? Yeah, thank you. All right. Yeah, I think we covered all this. So next, I want to talk about the monitoring and target levels then. DPR and Air Resources Board have been conducting monitoring for 1.3D and methylbromide simultaneously since 2011. We are also conducting monitoring, what we call a seasonal basis, in 2005 and 2006. That was occurring at six locations each of those years. But we've only been conducting year-round monitoring since August of 2010. And that's been at one location. Between August 2010 and October 2011, that monitoring was conducted at the animal shelter located at the Camarillo Airport. After that, the site was moved in October 2011 to Rio Mesa High School, and that's where monitoring continues today. The photos there show examples of the monitoring equipment. The top photo there shows the monitoring that was done in 2005 and 2006 at Laguna Vista Elementary School. The bottom photo shows the sampler setup currently at Rio Mesa. The key piece are these silver spheres. These are stainless steel canisters, six liters in size. It's also shown here in the side, the sampler at Rio Mesa. So our procedure is for Air Resources Board staff to collect a single 24-hour sample once every six days at the Rio Mesa High School site. So of course, that takes about one week to complete. That sample is then sent back to Sacramento for analysis by the Air Resources Board lab. And so this is not a real-time air sample. You don't get a readout as to what the air concentration is. You have to send the sample back to the lab, and the lab takes about one month or so to analyze that sample for 1.3D and for methylbromide. ARB staff then goes through the data, checks it for validity, and make sure everything else is in order. And they send that data to DPR on a quarterly basis. And so the last samples of a quarter for any year, October through December, DPR would receive those results, usually sometime between March and April of the following year. DPR would then evaluate the data. We would go through our own checks. We would do some calculations. We do our health evaluation, and we will write up the results. And that takes us normally about three months or so. And so for, and we produce our results on an annual basis. about three months or so. And so for, and we produce our results on an annual basis. And so for the preceding year, we would now normally publish our report in June or July. Then we would discuss the findings with other agencies. We have what we call a pesticide registration and evaluation committee composed of the remaining agencies within Calipie as well as UC, Department of Food and Agriculture, and other agencies. And they sort of act as our technical advisory group to this project. And so we discuss it with them. They give us their recommendations for our, making sure that our interpretation of the data is correct, how we might change our monitoring in the future, and other recommendations. And I know this timeline is of interest to you. So any questions on this?
Just so I can be clear here, what we, the information we had before was that a test done in January of 2012 translates into an official report by you in June of 2013, approximately 18 months later?
Correct. Yes.
Is that, putting that together, that's what?
Correct.
So the test done in January of 2012 is not sent to you until the end of the year? Or is it sent to you every two months?
It's sent to us on a quarterly basis. So all the results from January through March, we would receive, what is it, like, May or June?
Of 2012.
2012.
But you wouldn't do anything with them?
We, it may just, we may look at the one-day and four-week results, but of course, there's, we wouldn't, there is not enough data there to look at the one-year average concentration. We wouldn't do that until the end of the year.
If you were over the year before, would you then look at that data?
Um.
Or would you still wait?
I don't know that would tell us anything really, at least in terms of the cancer risk.
If you were over two or three years in a row, would you look at that data? Or would you still wait a year? I'm just still trying to find out the target.
We, for the cancer risk, we would only look at it on an annual basis, but I'm not sure if that answers the question.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Randy, that information was sent to the schools and to the ag commissioner and to whom?
Correct. To the ag commissioner, yes. For all of our sites that we monitor, and of course, we're monitoring at more sites than just Rio Mesa. And we've been doing monitoring, DPR and Air Resources Board have been doing monitoring of pesticides since the mid-1980s. And our standard procedure is to, of course, get permission from that site in order to set up the air sampler. And then if they wish to receive the results, then of course, we send them. But we normally wouldn't send them to a site unless they request it.
So the ag commissioner receives it, and then the school district has to request it? Is that it?
Well, if the school district wanted the results, then of course, we would send them. But we wouldn't do it on, when we first obtained permission to sample off the site, we asked them, would you like to receive the results as we get them? And in the past, they've normally said no. It's only a few sites where they've said, yes, we would like to see, receive the results.
So I appreciate you realizing this time period is one of the sensitive questions for us. So a test done in June of 2012 turns into an official report by you in June, I'm sorry, a test done in January of 2012 turns into an official report from you in June of 2013?
Correct.
And that official report is sent to our ag commissioner?
Correct.
Okay. And outside of somebody specifically asking for it, there's no requirement that anything else be done with that report?
Correct. If I understood the question.
By the ag commissioner or you guys? Okay. Thank you.
So getting to the 13D results specifically then, we had mentioned earlier the screening levels and regulatory targets. These are the specific screening levels and regulatory targets for 13D. We have different levels depending on the duration of the exposure. And for what we call acute exposure, we look at the one-day air concentrations. For what we call subchronic or seasonal exposure, we look at the four-week average air concentration. For chronic exposure, we look at the one-year average air concentration. In the case of cancer, again, we look at the lifetime exposure or what we assume is a 70-year exposure.
If I can ask you about that. So that lifetime, I mean, we haven't had a chance to test this for 70 years.
Right.
It's just that if the animal's lifetime is a four-year lifetime, then you expose this animal to this thing for their lifetime, for four years. And then we extrapolate that since humans live 70 years, that although it had an impact on the animal in four years, that was the animal's lifetime. And so therefore, for a human, it would take 70 years?
Yeah. There are certain standard extrapolations that the staff does. Yes.
That's interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So monitoring results themselves, you've probably seen some of this. For the 2005 and 2006 monitoring, none of the air concentrations exceed our screening levels. But again, this is seasonal monitoring here. This is not year-round monitoring. The results for 2005 is there on the first line. That's the highest air concentrations for all six locations during that monitoring period. The second line shows the results for 2006, and you can see they're below the screening level shown on the last line.
And how often in one year would you test? Is this just once a year?
In this case, it was, I believe, two or three days per week during this six- or eight-week period.
Thank you.
Yeah. Monitoring at the animal shelter at the Camarillo Airport, that was for a 15-month period. This is one where if you look at the last line, that .25 part per billion does exceed the .14 regulatory target. But again, we're trying to estimate a 70-year exposure based on a 15-month average sample. So DPR, of course, is subsequently taking actions to reduce the exposures, and so it's unlikely that this exposure continues at this particular site. And then, of course, the monitoring at Rio Mesa, we've been monitoring there since October 2011 and continues through the present. We have results through December 2014, which is shown on the table there. Again, none of the air concentrations now exceed our screening levels or our regulatory target.
Whoa. Could you go back, please?
Yeah.
So you say now the average over 39 months is .14?
Yes.
But the average was higher than that?
For the first three years, yes.
Because you have a document here that says that you've exceeded the limit for a certain length of time. I thought it said 39 months. But now you're saying this 39-month average does not exceed it, right?
Yes. So as we get more monitoring data, we continue to revise our overall average.
Okay. So you were over for two years. But when you added the third year in, then you got down to?
Right. And of course, the longer that we monitor, the better the estimate to compare to a 70-year target level.
Still, I'm still asking the question, when do you, when does it trigger, does this trigger a reversal now of your decision to suspend, you know, waivers, for example, because it's now come down?
No. Well, our long-term plan now is to update our risk assessment, redo or revise, update our evaluation of the potential health effects and what the current exposures look like. And then after that assessment of the risks is completed, then we'll revise our management program.
So we have a communication from you in December of 2014 that obviously doesn't get to average in the December 2014 data.
Correct. Yes.
But you're able to average that in because of the test done in January of 2015? Is that right?
No. The December 2014 document only includes results through 2013, through December 2013.
So the test done in January of 2014?
Is included in the 2014 results. Yes.
I don't see how that could happen.
Yeah. Control Room, why don't you go to that detailed results for 2011 through 2014?
Look, okay, here's, I just want to try to be real clear here.
Yeah.
You say that you now have data that says up to December of 2014, which was six months ago.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
You've now rolled that data in and say, okay, now we've got a rolling average here.
Right.
Right? But before, you told us that you don't look at the data, and the only way that could happen is it's from data from January of 2015.
Got it. Okay.
But you told us you don't do that.
Right. Yes.
You don't, you don't, you don't look at that data until the next year.
Right.
So how is it that you, or why is it that it's put in this time?
Right. Got it.
When you say you, before, when it was exceeding, you said, well, we don't look at it at that point in time. Now, I just have to tell you, now it creates the appearance, well, you're rolling it in because it lowers the average.
Yeah. You know, I finally got your question.
Yeah.
Yes. And you actually have a good point. I hadn't actually considered that, whether we should recompute our overall average as we get the results, which is something we could do, but.
Well, wait a minute. That is what you just did.
Yeah, but we only do it on an annual basis. I think what you're asking?
No. You just, you just, this, you can't have December 2014 data up there unless it's something you collected in January of 2015.
Yeah. No, I guess it's, still don't understand the question then. I'm sorry.
Is there a difference between me pouring it and?
The question is, how can you expedite the averages so quick, you know, if it takes, you know, a year or so?
Oh, well, it's the 2014, January 2014 through December 2014 data is now included.
When was the January 2014 to December of 2014? What test was it that is giving us that? Is it the test that was done in January of 2014?
Okay. The one-year and lifetime average are based on multiple samples. We average in all the samples for the year. And so in this case, ARB is collecting a single sample every six days. And so for the entire year, that means about 60 samples are being collected. And we would take the average of all 60 of those samples in order to compute the one-year average.
Great. So you, you got some samples done in December, November and December of 2014?
Yes.
And they're included now?
Correct.
And before, you said, though, it takes, it takes 18 months before you?
Oh.
Before you get the data?
No. I'm sorry. I misspoke then. We would receive the January samples about May or June from Air Resources Board.
Right.
But we wouldn't compute the one-year average until we had all the data for that year.
Yeah. What he was saying, when you did January, it takes 18 months until June of the next year. But it doesn't take 18 months from the November of the 14.
Right.
It doesn't take that.
So that's backdate.
Because once it's all done, then it takes six months to compile the report. That's what he said.
So you can't actually get the results, you can't actually get the results a lot quicker than 18 months. It's just, that's how long you wait and then put together the report?
Correct.
And then we get it. But in the meantime, you're rolling those results in.
Yeah. So another way to look at it, it would be 18 months for the January results, but it's six months for the December results.
So just to the question of how fast can we get results, it sounds like we can get them a lot faster if we don't wait around for the entire year.
Yes. Although there wouldn't be much you could do in terms of estimating the cancer risk based on the January results by themselves.
He needs a four-year result to take it.
But the question was, how did you get it so quick?
That was the question. Yep. Okay.
Yeah. So, okay. So I guess we can now go back to the 13D monitoring slide. Thank you. Okay. So next, methyl bromide and chloro picrin. Just to summarize, none of our methyl bromide air samples exceeded the screening levels, our regulatory targets, either in 2005 or 2006, or the most recent monitoring for August 2010 to the, at least through December 2014. Similarly, with chloro picrin, we've only done that one time. That was August through October 2014, but we are going to repeat it for 2015 as well. Next, I was going to talk about our work in progress, and let us know if there are any more questions about the monitoring. Okay. We continue to do monitoring at Rio Mesa. We will continue that at least through 2015. Then we plan to reassess all of our monitoring that we're doing at all of our sites to see if we should continue, revise our monitoring plan, or end our monitoring. As I mentioned, we are also updating our assessment of the health risks from 13D, and we will be revising how we manage or our regulatory requirements for 13D after that. Then, as I mentioned earlier, Brian mentioned previously, we have a grants program to fund alternatives to pesticides, and finding alternatives to fumigants is that grants program's highest priority. And then finally, just to wrap up, DPR has comprehensive programs to evaluate and regulate pesticides used in California. DPR is the only agency in the country that has a program to mitigate the risk of cancer from 13D. Our monitoring to date indicates that their risk from cancer from 13D is minimal based on the 39-month average air concentration from Rio Mesa. And we are updating our assessment of the health risk, and we'll be revising our regulatory requirements. Any further questions?
Okay. Any further questions?
I just, I just think, one of the things I think was being asked up here was how that data gets quicker. But I think it's, we better be clear about what we say is because if you talk about 39 months, but you've got three years of data, which you then bring in on a yearly average, you can't really bring in the next month because it's not the same kind of an average as the whole year is together.
Exactly. Right.
So you can't say we did something in January and then add it to what we did because it would skew the whole.
Yes.
Your report wouldn't have any accuracy to it.
Right. Yeah.
Unless you do it that way. Because I think that's what was being asked up here.
Right. Yes.
How quick that, so it only comes once a year?
Yes. Exactly.
And by the time you compile, it takes six months after. Okay. Great.
You know, in a?
I agree, and you pointed, I really appreciate you pointing that out. That really helped.
Well, I'm just wondering, because we're trying to get transparency and being able to understand the information, and with the 70-year lifetime as the threshold, do other states do it that way also?
No other states assess it.
Does it at all?
Right.
Because, you know, I think about things like building heights, you know, you can do the average, and then you can, you can have a very tall building.
Right. Right.
Or, you know, if you just have a limit, it's a lot simpler and understandable. So that's.
Yeah. Well, I mean, US EPA, now, they have assessed 13D as well. They also determined that it causes cancer, but they felt that no mitigation was needed.
Right. But so is DPR's decision that the threshold will be a 70-year?
That's going to be part of our reassessment.
As opposed to a simple number that, you know, it is exceeding at a, you know, the threshold to me is not very, it's confusing and not really transparent.
Yes.
And particularly when it changes
Yes.
over the years. It seems to me having just a line in the sand where you know it
Right.
is a lot easier, and then the ability to bank and exceed and all that, it just.
Yes. Actually, this is, again, we hate to use the word, but this is complicated. The .14 part per billion target concentration, that is what we call a time-weighted average for 70 years. If now we were to set, say, a 10-year or 20-year target level, the .14 now would not be .14. We would take and average it down. So let me think. If we changed it from 70-year to 35-years, one half that time period, that .14 would become .28 because it's a time-weighted average.
Right. Because then you need more and a shorter concentration
Correct. Yes.
to make it work for you.
Right. Yes.
I think what they're really trying to get is, if we see a report that hit two, oh, we've got trouble. And really, what you're saying is, the product itself is hazardous, but one exposure a little bit is not, it's that continual hazard is what you're really trying to say is?
Correct. Yes. Right. Yeah.
Okay. So I think that's what they're trying, is there just a line in the sand that she said?
Yeah.
But you really can't do that.
And the science isn't that good at this point.
And that's a concern from a lot of people, is a little bit at a time, you know?
Right. Yeah.
It sounds like California, and you, what you're doing is so much further ahead than the rest of the country anyway.
Yeah. Right.
And because of the crops we have. So, okay. So wherever it's being done, we're doing more than anybody else is being done.
Correct.
And we're even looking at it again to see if there's more we can do. And we're even looking at it again to see if there's more we can do.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, other questions, supervising?
I, I do have a number of other questions, but most of my questions are about process and communication. But since we're on this, right now, we're on this particular issue of, I have a question about the science side of it. The, the, the two science questions I'd like to explore with you. One is this idea that you do an animal study, and if the animal's life expectancy is four years, and you expose the animal to something, and you, and, and the studies come back and say, you know, some statistically significant sample shows that animals, over their lifetime of four years, have a statistical increase in, in the risk of cancer who are exposed to levels above .14, I assume, right? That, that that is, that's, is it, that it's because their lifetime was four years, and so the science says that you can always do that? Or is it that it takes four years for this product to start to have its impact on cells, whether the animal is going to live, whether, whether an organism lives 20 years or, or 80 years? So tell me about this, could you, could you fill me in? What's, what's, where, where's that science come from? And is that DPR science? Is that somebody else?
It's, there are standard test procedures to measure the possible effects of cancer, and so there are standard study protocols that are followed. But that's an uncertainty in the study protocol. That is, the, the animals are not examined until the end of their lifetime. They are not sacrificed on the interim basis to look to see if they have cancer.
Right, so, so, I mean, is, is there anything in the science that says, so we should say, if that animal lives four years, and that's the average expectancy of that animal, and those animals, those animals, because you're going to be tested a lot, would, would we say that this is the exposure over a four-year period of time, instead of a?
No, well, there are standard methods to extrapolate from the animal's lifetime to humans. Not, and we have to extrapolate not only based on the differences in lifetime, we have to extrapolate based on differences in body weight, in respiration rate. And so there are a number of different adjustments we have to make to convert the doses in animals to the doses in humans. And in fact, of course, that has some uncertainty associated with it, and so we add in some, what some people call safety factors, or uncertainty factors for those extrapolations.
So it's, so it's, I understand it's standard practice in terms of body weight, et cetera. It's also standard practice to extrapolate lifetime, the lifetime of the animal to the lifetime of the next organism?
Correct.
That's, that's standard scientific practice.
Yes, correct.
Okay. And this is, this is probably not science, but it's not communication necessarily, it's, it's, what, what is your, so if you have a 70-year target, you said it could be two years, it could be four years, it could be 10 years. I'm still, I, I have trouble thinking that we would say, you know, we really don't have to look at it till 69 years, and, and, you know, and I, and I don't think you would say that either. So, but is it, when is it that it, that it hits the radar screen that says, okay, now it's, we're paying attention? Is it, is it, when, is it one year, or two years, or four years, or when, when does that happen?
Yeah, I think that, I think I understood your question from earlier back. As we said, the 13D was under review, we knew that the existing program was going to go away, so we were already taking action. But when we saw numbers that were too high for, you know, getting to that regulatory time to do something, that's when we stopped the waiver program, you know, and we started to put some really meaningful restrictions on how much it could be used, say, around Rio Mesa. So, you know, but, so that program, it was already under review. We already knew that we were going to change the program, the changes were already occurring. But we had the flexibility to end that waiver immediately, because it was always a gift we gave the growers. And so when it came time to renew it, we said no. And then we also, you know, we put, so we put some restrictions. So, so I think we, because what I really heard was, well, you had this information for two years, why didn't you do something? Well, we were already doing something, and we did additional, you know, we took away protection. I think that's what you were saying.
I really ask you, is there a standard in the department that says, when we have a 70-year average, we will, we will do something if the standard is over, we will begin the process? In this situation, you, this situation, you say for maybe other reasons, you were already looking at this. But what, what's the trigger point? What is the trigger point that says, because you say, if we exceed this target, then we start looking at, should we do something different? So when, is it after a year, or after two years, or is there any policy?
Yeah, I think what you're asking for is a bright line, and there isn't one.
Okay, that's, that's, that's all I needed to hear. Okay, so there is no, there isn't a bright line there.
There is continuous reevaluation.
Great.
By US EPA and us.
But, but there is no, that's what I needed to know, I mean, because in, in, and as you said, communicating science is not easy. But as you could, a person could read the sentence that says, assuming the two-year average accurately represents a 70-year lifetime, you could read that and say, oh, okay, if, if it's over two years, then you're going to start saying, hey, we've got it, is that, that's your target for doing something? That's not what that sentence means.
Yeah, no, that was
Great, okay.
poor communication on our part.
Thank you. And so my, my next question, and both, if both of you stay there, I'm probably going to go back and forth, I would, I would think. And, and, you know, one of my questions that I'm still searching for an answer for is that, you sent a letter to the Rio Mesa principal, and this is now about communication. And I appreciate your saying, hey, we, you know, we, we, we can always communicate better. It was September 30th of 2014. You had already come out June of 2013 with an official report that said, we're over the target. Right now, our running average is over the target of .14. But in your letter to him 14 months later, and it was, you were saying, we're testing for 13D and all that other stuff, you didn't make any, any reference to being over. And could, could you explain if this is, I, I realize it is not, you know, there, there are no standards, there is, but it is something that was stimulating you to say, hey, I'll, I'll ask the question in a, maybe a more proactive way, which is, wouldn't it, wouldn't, wouldn't it, would, would, do you think it would build more trust in the agency if you would have said, and we want you to know, that right now, because we see the initial beginnings of exceeding a target, admittedly, it's a 70-year target, but we, we're looking at this, we're watching this, we're monitoring this. It would give you, it would seem, much more credibility and, and trust in the public, rather than say, you had this report in June of 2013, you've sent it to our ag commissioner, but in a communication to the principal of Rio Mesa High School, who is at least, you know, obviously has some concern about this, and the issue's starting to bubble up, there's no, there's no reference or mention of the fact that a target has been initially, I'm trying to get the right words, initially exceeded, and it is something on the radar screen. Could you help me with that one? Why, why would that letter not include that?
Yeah, so, yeah. Mentioned earlier that we normally only send results to one of our monitoring sites if they request it. And at the time, we did not know that the Rio Mesa school was unaware that we were doing the monitoring, so of course, we didn't know that we should send the results to them. And so that was one reason for the delay. The other reason now that, I don't know that I would agree that our initial results were of concern. It may indicate that we would need to take some further actions down the road, but I, I don't know that I would agree that it was something to worry about immediately, and that school would have value in us informing them of that.
So you, you would say that sending a letter to the principal describing the testing that's going on and not mentioning that is, you, you think is the appropriate step? Even now, you think that was appropriate to not do that?
We, we sent the letter, if, if I recall now, if, we, we sent the letter to the principal in September of 2014. We subsequently set up a meeting with the principal that occurred, I believe, in November of 2014. We discussed the results with the principal. We asked him if we, if he would like a fact sheet, a layperson's description of the monitoring, in which he said, yes, he would. And so that's what we prepared and gave that to him in December 2014.
I, I, I understand that December 2014, and, you know, there's, that, that communication has some, but, but in September of 2014, you think it was appropriate to not? That's, you, you think it was appropriate to not inform the principal of the results?
At the time, well, most monitoring sites that we have show very low interest in the results. Like I said, very few sites actually request the results. For one thing, they would have trouble understanding it and doing something with those results. And so most sites don't request it. This is one site that did.
Uh-huh, okay.
I could understand it's pretty complicated, why they'd have some.
Well, and that gets back to the point of communication transparency, it shouldn't be so complicated.
The, and the, I have the data here, I was able to come up with the data. In 2000 and, in 2008, this Rio Mesa township was at 261,000 pounds, and their draw actually was exceeded the bank. In other words, they, they, they didn't just have a bank, they went beyond that to 175,000 pounds, you know, into their, you know, into the, you know, into their draw, or beyond their, beyond their draw. So you said those decisions are, you know, earlier, you, you talked about trying to make your decisions science-based, but when I asked you, so what's the science for deciding whether to do that? And your response was, just a management decision, it's just management, management evaluation and decision. So is there a science involved in that, or is that a management decision?
Well, again, there, there is no bright line, and so it becomes a subjective decision as to whether or not to grant those waivers, and at what point the risk becomes unacceptable.
Okay, all right.
It's, it's, let me say, it sounds like to me that these are kind of internal stuff that you, management, things that you do, and in which you can drive change based on what you see and how you, you see it. Is that probably more clear?
Yeah.
Yeah, is, is what this is, it's not because there's no real difficult standards, we're just seeing, we know there's some issues here, we don't know if it's one exposure causes that, but it's, these are internal changes that we start to see some, we'll start to make changes as we, and it sounds like what's happened, I guess, is really what's happening.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm ready, I'll just try to go through these questions quickly, if I, if I can, right? All right. And the first question is, you know, when we've had Dogger here, Dogger referred to the fact that they have a dual mission. And do you have a dual mission? Or you talked about the, you know, your mission was this public safety, do you have a dual mission also, or?
No, our mission is, we regulate pesticides. So once a pesticide is put into legal use, and we have a say in that, you know, as far as for California, then our job is simply to regulate it. So we regulate it, it's pure and simple.
Okay, not, not a promotion of industry
No.
or any of those things, like, like Dogger has, right? The standards that we have here, are these standards, in, in, in reading the literature that you've provided so far, my understanding is these are standards for adult exposure. Is that correct?
If you're talking about the 13D cancer risk,
Yes.
it accounts for lifetime exposure, so from infant through adult.
Okay, so.
So it's very, it took me a long time to, that's assuming someone is in the same spot for 70 years.
Right.
From, throughout their same lifetime. Well, throughout their lifetime.
So, so it, so you're saying it, it factors in a, a period of time when they're a more sensitive receptor when they're a child?
Correct.
Right, okay. The, you talked about, you know, wanting to end up with a system that's clear. In the information that's been communicated to us, you make references to, and I have it here, targets, goals, use these terms almost interchangeably, you know, regulatory targets, health screening levels, those, for whatever it's worth, as you try to decide how to be more clear, each one of those, you know, if they don't come with a definition with them right at the time, but if they're just used interchangeably in your communication, in terms of building trust with the public, it's going to be difficult because of, just like, as you, as you, as you referred to there. The buffer zones, you talked about schools being located, and in that, those comments, Director Leahy, you, you referred to, there should be buffer zones. Does the department have an official position in terms of recommendations of buffer zones around?
Well, for the fumigants, there's buffer zones in place, as you know. If we have restricted-use materials, there's set, the school that we're doing right now, the school regulations, you know, we're probably, we're looking at a buffer zone, about for when, when a pesticide can be applied, if there's children, you know, on the campus. So, so we do use, buffer zones is one of the tools that we use.
Uh-huh.
And sometimes, if it's on the label, then it's definitely written into law there about the use.
So you have, you, you have some official buffer zones that you put in, but you were recommending that local governments establish buffer zones in addition, is that right?
The school regu, one of the reasons why we're doing the school regulation is to set a statewide standard, because it, different counties have different buffer zones that they, you know, works for them. But we want a clear, kind of a, a bright line, in this case, and give clarity. So it really changes the way people think, if they know that within a school area, you know, they're not going to spray when kids are present, you know, and, and whatever it comes out to, but that is a buffer zone.
Okay.
So, and then, as we said, if it's a restricted-use material, like we just are making, pyrophosphorus restricted-use material, that gives the county ag commissioners a lot more authority, too, to really look at it locally, meet local needs.
You, you, you were concerned about schools being located in agricultural areas, as we have, as we have been concerned, and you talked about that's sort of a land use, you know, decision and stuff. We have expressed concerns about that also, it is, but the fact that schools are state agencies, we don't have the ability to control those. Is the department lobbying the state in any way to restrict the location of schools in the middle of agricultural zones?
Yeah, we, we've had conversations with OPR, the Office of Planning and Research, you know, they attended some of our sessions, the school folks attended some of our sessions. So this is a very complex issue. Some of you may know, I ran, my first job with the state, I oversaw the Williamson Act and the land use decisions, a lot of land use, we did the strategic growth planning grants, whatnot. Schools have been a very, you know, they're exempt from the general plan, so they, they are challenged. But there's more interest, and one of the hopes in this discussion that's occurring around the school, you know, regulation, is that we start to really look at that, and see where we want to, you know, do we want to preserve agriculture on places like the Oxnard Plain?
And so the, so the department is, is lobbying to have the state change the law to potentially restrict school districts from locating schools, or?
I wouldn't know if lobbying would be the term,
Okay.
but we are definitely talking to our sister agencies.
All right, great, thank you.
Could I ask a follow-up on the buffer question? You had indicated that it, it is discretion, for example, on the ag commissioner to establish more restrictive buffer zones? And my question is, are there conditions to that? Are there some, you know, how big is that discretion? Is he able to make those decisions based on things that are local, or are there actually some limitations on that discretion?
First off, the commissioner would only have discretion for those 37 or so restricted materials, so not all pesticides, only those that are restricted materials. And any additional requirements the commissioner implements, he has to justify, he can't make an arbitrary decision. He has to have a basis for his decision.
And if, if it was challenged, then it would come up to the director to, to, you know, approve or not. So there, there's checks and balances in that as well.
So somewhere there's a list of findings that have to be made for that discretion?
Not necessarily a list of findings, but he has to be able to justify his actions.
To that point, Terrell, my understanding, we discussed it last time, is that our ag commissioner has implemented a quarter-mile buffer when school is in session for these pesticides, is that correct, Henry? Yes, thank you.
I'd like to ask you just a couple of the questions real quick. In the past, when we gave those waivers for the 13D, was that also because we were just not going to use methylbromide? Was that why they were doing that? So we were taking a lesser, and they're going to use something else?
Yeah, you're correct, and that, methylbromide, another fumigant, is being phased out by US EPA. And so the other fumigants, particularly 13D and chlorpicrin, are now increasing in use. And so, again, it, we have to try and carefully balance what we're doing with 13D with what might happen with the other fumigants if we were to suddenly put additional restrictions onto it.
Right, because we knew these other fumigants are, are more, more dangerous, so we're trying to get rid of them, but you've got to let the grower grow. But you've got to let the grower grow, so you've got to try to find a way to let them use something that's less. And so, they've been able to, and so that's why we had some of those waivers, huh?
Yes.
Okay, good. You know, is it also interesting, because part of that whole deal in that report that you're talking about, that maybe would have went to school, or you're kind of doing this internally and making changes, I, I'm more on your side of that, because sometimes you can send a report, but I don't have the science understanding to even interpret that report, and something looks bad, and I don't even know what I'm looking at. And so, you know, and that, that to me gets a little bit, because unless you send somebody to explain what this means, what it mean, all the stuff that we're just hearing today, it would've been a little bit more difficult.
But, but, but if you sent a letter to a principal in the school or whatever, and you have all this technical, scientific information, and you put in bold letters, could be dangerous to your students or dangerous to, to the community, I would assume that that administrator will call you to interpret that.
Yeah. Well, our, our initial report was quite technical. And so, that's why we subsequently developed the fact sheet. So, it would be easier for the principal and others to understand.
The administrators do.
Yeah, it just gets so complicated to figure this out, yeah. I know he, Brian said it's going to be a complicated question, thing here today.
So, I, I sent you a number of questions. Do you, do you believe that you've answered the questions that I sent you?
I believe so.
Okay. So, if, if I could, and I appreciate Supervisor Foys saying, you know, you send something complicated to a busy principal, you could have this problem. On the other hand, Supervisor Zaragoza saying, if you don't send it, you, you risk being perceived as, as trying to hide the information. But you decided to send, in December of 2014, as you said, based on requests, you decided to send them the data, right?
Yes.
And so, I know you said you thought you answered the questions, but one of my specific questions that I haven't heard the answer to is, why did the information sheet that you provided to the school district in December of 2014 include a table of test results, but admit from that table the regulatory target? The, the, the lifetime target? So, it, you, 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 you make reference to it, you actually say it in a sentence, but, you know, for somebody, for an educator or principal looking at it, now, when you're just 15, one, you actually do include that target. So, if you believe you've answered that question, and I haven't heard it, which is, why in the December 2014 memo, did you not include that the lifetime target was .14, when you, when you, when you actually have say in here, assuming the two-year average accurately represents a 70-year lifetime, the cancer risk from 1.3D has slightly exceeded the DPR's regulatory target? Why wouldn't that be in the chart?
Yeah, that was an oversight on our part. As you said, it's not in the table, but it is in the text, which we subsequently revised based on your suggestion for the following fact sheet.
So, you just think it was an oversight that it wasn't in, in the table?
Yes, correct.
Do you do these regularly, or was this, is this, is this a form that was kind of created for Rio Mesa High School to put this all in?
It was created specifically for Rio Mesa.
Great, okay, thank you. A couple other questions, and I, I appreciate this is going on. You know, when the plastic is put down, this is back to a science question, you know, when the plastic is put down, you talked about that's an attempt to try to make sure that you suppress, you know, the admissions. Does it block all of the admissions from coming out? Or, and if it does, then how does any of this get in the air?
No, you're correct. It does not block all the admissions. That's why we have buffer zones and township caps.
And testing, okay, thank you. All right. All right, I've just asked you that question. And, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Other questions?
Yeah, Madam Chairwoman, I had, I had quite a few questions myself, but I think that Randy has, has answered them, you know, about the waivers or exemptions, and also the, the exploring mitigations, and also you talked about the, the exemptions are not going to be granted anymore, you know, and so forth. And also, the, I think the supervisor also mentioned about the letter to, to Rio Mesa, a little contradictory, a little technical, and we didn't fully understand. And the, one question that I have, and then I have some recommendations, but-
We also have public speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry, then, well, let me, let me share the other one then. At the Rio Mesa testimony, they, there was a lot of testimony from farmworkers that there were quite a few accidental sprays, that individuals were sprayed, you know, farmworkers and possibly residents. And what safeguards does DPR have to play, in place for those concerns? Is it DPR's responsibility, or is it the ag commissioner's responsibility?
Yeah. If somebody was actually sprayed, then that's most likely a violation of the current rules and regulations. And those should be reported to the county agricultural commissioner for follow-up.
Yeah, and we had also testimony that over on Eldorado, which is the South Oxnard, right off of Chedle Islands, there's apartments there, and there's a strawberry field east of there between Eldorado and, and Rice Road. You know, I know you don't know the geography, but, but there was winds there, they were blowing right into the apartments and into the children that were playing, and, and, and adults coming out of their cars and open windows and so forth. Is that type, who do we, who does people report?
Again, that would, should be investigated by the county agricultural commissioner.
Agricultural commissioner?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And I have some recommendations, but you said we have some speakers. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. That's yours?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And my mic is now back on. You were very good and clear in answering the questions, thank you. All right, let's, we do have public speakers. I only see three Mr. Palmer's edit. Okay, so we'll stay with five minutes, since you've been so patiently waiting. First up is Rob Roy.
Thank you, Chairwoman Long and fellow board members. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Leahy and Mr. Sagawa and his team for coming down here today and enlightening the board. I think it's unfortunate that we've waited so long to do this. I think that a lot of public discourse and other issues would have been avoided had they been contacted first, rather than having NBC and CBS and all the other people here doing a sideshow for really what was a prelude to a statewide issue involving DPR taking on this issue. My concern is, is that, you know, we started this issue on 1.3D, and yet there's been no evidence whatsoever that anyone has been affected by 1.3D. And in fact, it's put into the ground, it's not sprayed, and it is inert. And while there's a possibility that part of it may get out because of workmanship or other conditions, that's why we have buffer zones. And according to Mr. Sagawa, it doesn't get on equipment at the school, it doesn't stay there to affect children. Our own public health officer indicated there have been no reports of any pesticide-related incidents in this particular county. So, there's a lot of misinformation out there. And I think Supervisor Long stated that we have to work on the facts and the science, not a lot of fears. There was a letter to the board by Maricelum Morales, who heads up CAWS with David Rodriguez over the weekend on June 13th, talking about spraying methylbromide. Spraying methylbromide, really? And this is the people that you rely upon, Mr. Zaragoza, who have no knowledge of what the facts are regarding fumigants? Anyways, this, what started out to be a discussion on 1.3D has, has now gone into a larger discussion with regard to pesticides and spraying of pesticides. And I will tell you that Rio Mesa was really the spark plug for this, but it was really much to do about nothing, because no one has been poisoned out there. There's no evidence that they have. The fact of the matter is that because some of these amounts were overused, I, I think that Mr. Sagawa's slide indicated exceeding a regulatory target concentration does not necessarily mean an adverse health effect occurs. That's what's really happening here. Because the people that are pushing this movement don't want any pesticides, they want a one-mile buffer zone between these fields and the schools and other safe sites, which is not economically feasible. And so, my, I submit to the regulatory agencies, this is the county, the state, or whoever, or these NGO groups, that if they want to put a one-mile buffer zone, then pay for it. Buy an agricultural easement around that school. Then we won't have that problem anymore. Or maybe we could amend SOAR, since you're in the middle of it, Mr. Bennett. Maybe we'll just exempt that land around the schools that's in the non, unincorporated areas, so they can build houses, and they can look at houses rather than being worried about whether or not they're being exposed to pesticides. And the fact of the matter here is, is that, you know, I would imagine that DPR is going to take some action on this, and they've indicated that it may deal with notification, which I don't have any objection to. We're already doing that here in Ventura County, but I understand that they're looking for a statewide bright line type of regulatory fix. And so, I understand that, that maybe they have to go farther than what we're doing here in Ventura County. But increasing buffer zones is really going to take a lot of that land out of the mix, and it's going to have an adverse effect on farmworkers and others. When workers say they're being sprayed, it doesn't involve 1.3D, and it doesn't involve methylbromide, and it doesn't involve chloropickren, because they're put in the ground. So, if someone's out there and they're spraying on a windy day in violation of their permit, they are in violation. Those should be reported to the county health commissioner, or ag commissioner, or the DPR. But that's not the case here with 1.3D or methylbromide or chloropickren. So, I would hope that whatever additional activities or services that you're going to require of the ag commissioner's office, that you fully fund those activities. Because we have a great ag commissioner here, I wouldn't want to lose him to some other county. But he's tremendously doing a great job with little resources compared to other counties in the state that have a lot more resources and have a lot more personnel, and we're imposing a lot more obligations upon him that may not be necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roy.
Madam Chairwoman, I have met with both sites. I've met with the CAWS, and I've met with the growers, too, and I've met with Bobby Jones, and I've met with the growers on Camry also. I weigh in both sites.
I understand that, sir.
I just want to share that with you.
I understand that, but you also should weigh the facts.
What's that?
You should weigh the facts.
That's right. That's why we're here.
Bobby Jones?
Good afternoon. Thank you, Chairwoman Long and fellow board members. My name is Bobby Jones, and I'm a third-generation farmer of the ag land behind Rio Mesa. I also live on this ranch with my 13-year-old daughter and six-year-old son. I'm glad TPR came to Ventura to share accurate information about pesticides. However, I think there is still some confusion among the community and the board. Let me clarify. We fume our ground one time per year, and the fumigant is injected, as you saw in the slides, into the soil. This takes place when the school is vacant. We apply roughly 275 pounds per acre. This equates to .006, or six thousandths of a pound per acre, under totally impenetrable film. For years, we have worked with Rio Mesa, Principal Dabs, and Brian Fitzgerald to communicate application dates and schedules. We follow the strictest regulations in the world, and with the help of Henry Gonzalez, we go above and beyond the state regulations to protect our families, workers, and the community. Current DPR regulations are sufficient. The level of fumigant around Rio Mesa dropped by nearly half in 2014. Rio Mesa High School was built in the late 1960s, and it was the intent of the Oxnard Union High School District to build a school totally surrounded by commercial agriculture. They envisioned that there would be housing around that school. Just yesterday, the California Supreme Court issued an opinion noting, and I quote, "The lack of affordable housing is a very significant problem in the state," end quote. And to Supervisor Parks in regards to your comment of getting children away from the schools and the land use issue, I would urge that any new SOAR initiative contain an exception for ag land adjacent to public schools to make such projects more feasible. There are groups urging a one-mile pesticide-free zone around schools. There are over 21 schools affected. This is not workable. I have a map that I've brought. In fact, this would roughly affect 54,300 acres out of the 101,000 acres in the county, effectively reducing the acreage by 53% and revenue by $980 million, costing tens of thousands of jobs. Penalizing ag for the school's intrusion into the ag zone will not save open space and agricultural resources. Thank you.
Mr. Jones, I just want to thank you if you had a role in the reduction of that pesticide use in the last year, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Lynn Jensen?
Thank you, Chair and Board. I'm Lynn Jensen with the Ventura County COLAB, Coalition of Labor, Agriculture, and Business. And we really appreciate DPR coming today to discuss the regulation of pesticides in our county. It's very important conversation. The farming community is very sensitive to these issues, as you've heard by the other speakers. They care deeply about the safety of the community, and their own health and the health of their families are at stake here. We also appreciate the leadership of Henry Gonzalez, our ag commissioner, and his important implementation of the regulations that make our county safe. I just wanted to talk a second about the results of the 2014 monitoring around Rio Mesa School, which shows that in the preceding 39 months, the three fumigants, not just 1D3, but the three fumigants, including methylbromide and chloropickren, the concentrations at Rio Mesa High School were less than DPR's regulatory targets and the screening levels, indicating a low health risk for these time periods, and that was in DPR's report. For the fumigant 1.3D, DPR's screening level is 25 parts-per-billion per year. The highest one-year measurement at Rio Mesa in time was .19 parts-per-billion, which is 1% of that screening level. And then, if you look at the targets over a 70-year lifetime, the exposure target for 1.3D is the 1.4 parts-per-billion, which you've all heard about. But in 2014, the average concentration fell to .09 parts-per-billion, which is 36% less than the target concentration. And this is both due to DPR's regulations, and also you heard today about the farmers injecting fumigants under totally impermeable films, which has lowered significantly the air quality readings. But despite all of that, the facts and the science, there are faculty, parents, and students who are expressing concerns about farming operations around Rio Mesa School, with concerns also being expressed around other schools, particularly in Oxnard. COLAB believes the solution to this public perception program is a land use decision. While the county has opposed the state building, in state, the state building schools in the agricultural areas, the battle has been lost in most cases. And urban encroachment has happened without the proper land use buffers. This is impacting agriculture around the county, making it more difficult to farm, even though farm practices, including pesticide usage, have become more regulated and more protective of human health and the environment over time. We think it's time in this county to have a serious conservation, conversation about our community and about new land uses around primary and secondary schools to provide the proper buffers to agriculture, and that needs to be done by the urban developers. This cannot be a sacrifice of farming and those families who grow food for our benefit. One last comment, Supervisor Zaragoza, really appreciate your conversation about having balance in the argument, because we see that this fear and emotion puts our food supply at risk, is what DPR said, and also, they said that hunger is not nice. So, we need to have this balance. It's important that we grow food here, and it's important that we make the correct land use decisions for our county. Thank you so much.
Could I ask a question? Would you be supportive if we had a requirement that you have a buffer if a development wants to move into farmland, next to farmland, that there be a required buffer?
Yes.
Good to know, thank you.
Okay, that, that's all the public comment requests. So, back to the board for other questions. I have a question, Director Leahy, I think. Does DPR plan to discontinue monitoring? You're going, you're going to continue monitoring sites?
Yes.
As these products either get phased out or, or continue to be used? As these products either get phased out or continue to be used, but monitored more closely, or?
Monitoring is a very important tool. So our goal is to continue to use that tool, to improve it as we develop new techniques, new places. So, yeah, there is a commitment for monitoring, ongoing monitoring.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor?
Madam, I have some recommendations, you know, if I'm not sure if...
I wonder if you could address what we were looking at, trying to see that we have a faster turnaround when we do do monitoring. One of the suggestions, as you heard, was that we could bring in our own air pollution control district to do the monitoring, send the samples to CARB, then you guys would get it, and we'd be able to get a faster return of the information than what we have been getting in the past?
Randy, correct. Randy knows air monitoring, so I'm not sure how we would save any time doing that, but...
Yeah, you probably wouldn't save that much time. There isn't a whole lot of time you could shave out of the current timeline, maybe one month or so, but it would depend on the laboratory that you contracted with. If you went with Air Resources Board, chances are, they couldn't do it any faster than they'd do it for us.
It sounds like, from listening to the discussion, that the issue is more in how long you have the data and before you report it, but you actually were able to fold in information pretty quick into the 2015's, right? So is it possible that we can get that information sooner? You have it, you just haven't put it in a report?
I'm sorry, say that again. I guess I didn't understand the question.
Well, I understand. Yeah, you're asking, can we get the information as quick as possible? And so we have a commitment to that. You know, we just... So that's the best we can do, is we will try to reduce the amount of time that it takes from when we get the results that we can actually deal with, to trying to get something into the information, you know, information out into the public.
It sounds like it's almost a year, you know, from when you get the results to when that report comes out.
Well, now it's six months, and it's hard to do much quicker than that. Bureaucracy is bureaucracy, no matter where you're at. But the time is time. It's pretty quick.
Right. But as I understand, the report was, you're doing information from a year ago, and you're holding that information until you present the report, depending on when you took those test results. So that's what I was wondering. If we can get those test results sooner, or have to wait for that whole period of time in order to get the report, I think that would be helpful, because then we, you know, can be flagged if we know that you have some exceedance there, and we can know about it. And I think that was one of the problems we had, is just the length of time it has taken us to get the information.
Yeah, if you go back and look at the slides, you'll see that it's only the lifetime cancer risk that might be exceeded. The one-day, four-week, and one-year screening levels were not even close in terms of comparison to the measured air concentrations. And we can't compute that lifetime exposure until we have entire years worth of monitoring data.
Right.
So that would be available, that information? You just wouldn't have the 70-year average?
Correct.
Right. Okay. Any other questions?
My thing is, I just appreciate you coming down and going through this stuff, and heard some interesting stuff, and you were right in the beginning, it's kind of complicated information, and you're the scientists, we're not. But I was glad to hear a couple of things. One was, the ag community was doing such a good job of application issues and use, because sometimes you think industry that's got all this training, people in factories do such a much better job, and what you're saying is, there's more issues there, where they got people that they're with all the time, these people out in the field doing stuff. That was great to hear, that we're doing a good job, because it just goes to show, from what you hear from the farming community and the owners saying, listen, these are our workers, and these are our families, these people have been around for, some of these people have worked for us for 20, 30 years, we're going to protect them. So I was just glad to hear that piece of it. And then also understanding what did come out in some of this testing, like you said, that you just said here, the one, the day, the four-week, or four... Those numbers were so under even your standards, it wouldn't have really made any difference. So I was glad to hear it, because our goal here is, we have to protect people, right? And the idea is, when we hear things, is we want to make sure that people are protected, and especially children and anybody. But glad to hear that there was not the danger, not that there's not danger in the chemicals themselves, but there wasn't the danger that we're all kind of hearing about there, and that you are, on your own, with your own internal management and everything else, looking at things and making changes. It's not a static situation. You're always looking to see what we can do to improve. So that was good to hear. Because again, we have a perception of what's going on, until we hear the reality, it showed a completely different story. So I just want to thank you for, I know it's a big trip to come down, and you get to enjoy Ventura County from hot Sacramento, but do thank you for all of you and your team in coming down, because I can see her over there going, no, 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 yes, yes, that's me. There's a brain sitting over there, so, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I just also, I want to thank you, Mr. Leahy, and Randy, and Charlotte, and all the folks that testified today too. You know, I think this is a good start, you know, and we have a lot to do. But I have a couple of recommendations. We talked about, one of the things I'd like to see is, put in writing that there'll be no more waivers, exemptions over the limits, and then put in writing, there'll be no more banking systems, or the systems that allow amounts to be used, amounts to be used in one year to exceed the amounts that you have, and that the DPR and the ag commissioner strongly enforce existing laws and regulations on the use of the 1.3D, you know, regarding the 90,000 pounds, and also promptly report, maybe within 60 days, if it's reasonable, to the school district, to the ag commissioners, and others monitoring their tests, and also for the public standards that have been established, to make sure that we do that. And DPR and the ag commissioner, as requested by farmworkers and representatives, require the growers to provide a standard notification within 48 hours of any sprain and so forth, and through the ag commissioner, and also provide school officials, residents, and all the other individuals on pesticides that are going to be used. And also, they have the ag commissioner, under county policy, we have a quarter-mile buffer zone. Is that sufficient, or can we look at other, maybe other zones? There might be more than a quarter, depending on the type of use of pesticides you're going to be using. And also DPR to provide incentives for growers and manufacturers to grow organic. I know you said organics use pesticides too, to some degree, and maybe that might be something that, with incentives from DPR, that the growers and the manufacturers could use that. And also, this is probably not for you, maybe for the school districts, stop putting schools in the middle of fields, you know, and ag fields. I think this is extremely important, because we end up with the problems, our people end up with the problems. And I know there's a lot of constraints in their zones, especially in the urban areas, but I think it's important that we protect our families and our employees and so forth by placing schools in the proper zones, if there's a possibility. And also DPR, and I know there was some ag representatives that they have association, they'd like to meet with DPR, and other officials, and the ag commissioner, I think we ought to involve the public also in those meetings, involve, you know, individuals, I know, like cause, and individuals like the farmers, like Bobby Jones and so forth, so that we're all on the same plate. I know some people don't like that, but it's important that we're all on the same table. That's my recommendation from me. And then, and also have DPR come over to the county at least once a year and give us an update, or send Randy over, or maybe you, because you like our weather. And of course, you know, the whole idea here is to create a balance, as I mentioned before. The farmers and the community, I know there's 45,000 jobs, and I know that we have to keep our people working, but we need to provide proper balance to protect the health, safety, and also support our farmers, and also related jobs, and our employees. It's extremely important. You mentioned that we have janitors, we have other people that we take care of. I think we ought to take care of the farmers just as well, and as well as here. We need to provide proper AC for us and so forth, though we're not, you know, I better not say it, so we don't have fumigants here and there. Anyway, I believe that both of us need to work together, and I believe that we can do both. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity, Madam Chair and Board Supervisors, to make the recommendations, and hopefully that maybe you can take some of the recommendations and implement them. And thanks you so much for being here today.
Thank you. And maybe we will come down once a year. And if you could send that in writing, that would help.
We'll give it in writing, absolutely.
And the dialogue is what's really important. These are sticky wickets, very tough things to be resolved only through communications, and they evolve, they change constantly. So it's only dialogue and good, working together, can you resolve these issues.
And there was testimony by some individuals, farmworkers, that by sitting together, you know, the growers and the farmworkers and everybody involved, school district and so forth, that we can solve our problems. They said, hey, we don't want to get rid of this industry. That's our job. Those are our jobs, and we want to see the industry, ag industry prosper, because it's our jobs. They mentioned that there at the testimony, so, and Randy heard it too.
Supervisor?
I also want to say thank you. You had a lot of things you could do with your time, and you decided to come down here, so we appreciate this a great deal. As has been said a couple of times, your agency, you are the scientist, and I don't think that there's anybody here that says, hey, we have, you know, a smoking gun that says there is a health risk that we know about. You have that responsibility to the taxpayers of the state to do that, but you also have a second responsibility, and that is to be, to communicate in a way that builds trust in government, that builds trust in your agency, and therefore builds trust in government. And so I think the fundamental question of this hearing today, and as often is the case, I disagree with my good friend, Rob Roy, down there. This hearing today, he says, if we would have had this, we wouldn't have had all this. I don't agree. I think that, on the issue of communication, that's the fundamental question. And the fundamental question is, you know, number one, does, you know, did and does the agency communicate appropriately, in a way that builds trust? And I have to say, my answer to the question is, no. And then my next question is, why is that the case? Is it because of pressure from the industry for you to cover up the information? And I'm not saying that's the case. I'm saying that's the question that people are asking me, and quite frankly, in this era where police officers are now being revealed over and over again as having, you know, not spoken accurately when they testify, certainly people are going to question the Department of Pesticides Regulation, you know? They don't know very much, et cetera. Or is it because, as you said earlier, you're a scientist and you don't communicate very well, right? And I'm not necessarily asking the question right now, I just want to make the case that those, that's, what I hope is that in the future, you will communicate in a way that that's not a question, that so nobody can say, well, yeah, you know, they spend a lot more time with the industry than they do with the public, or whatever, and so therefore they're under pressure, or all of those things. That's what is most important, because as you said, this is a complicated issue, and we have to get a complicated issue, we still have to build up trust. We won't make good policy overall in this state if we don't have the sort of ability to be able to do that. So I want to answer the question as to why I still say, or why I say, I thought before, and I still feel that you're not communicating appropriately in a way that really builds trust. And, for example, I sent you eight questions in writing, and I asked you if you believe that you've answered those questions. In my own mind, I believe of my eight questions, you answered three of them. I believe that I asked two of the questions when you didn't answer them at the end of your presentation and stuff. I had to ask two questions to get them answered. And there are three questions that I've just not bothered to ask because I didn't want to, because, and I asked for those in writing, but that's fine, get them here, but I didn't get a specific answer. So for better or for worse, somebody who's elected by some people in Ventura County to try to represent them, and they ask me questions, and I ask you questions in writing, and I asked those questions in late April, and I still don't have a written answer to those questions, that's not healthy in terms of good communication. Let me just, you know, and it would be fine to say, the question's not answerable, the question's not appropriate. That would be helpful. But I will give you an example of a question. You know, I asked, when attempting, I prefaced on the other questions, I said, when attempting to explain this conflict above, DPR was stated in the newspaper as saying, it was because it referred to a risk for a different disease. And I said, what's that mean? What different disease are we talking about? Now, it could be, your response could be, the paper simply misquoted. Heaven forbid, the papers never misquoted anybody. I see the press out there. But I don't have an answer to that question. I don't have an answer to, and I'll tell you specifically, so it's in the record, right? You answered, in my mind, questions three, five, and seven of my eight questions that I sent you. I asked questions one and two. You still have not answered questions four, six, and eight. I hope that you would, and I think that, and I wish you well. I think that you genuinely want to try to earn the public's trust. I genuinely see the reaction immediately when even the topic comes up, could it be because you're under pressure from the industry? That's not what motivates you. But how do you earn that, you know, from people? And so I wish you well as you try to find a way, but we can't just simply say, because it's complicated, it's okay for the communication to not build trust. When the principal of Rio Mesa High School asks for information, it's got to be communicated in a way that doesn't lead to an erosion. When I talk to them, they say, I met with them, and I still wasn't clear that, you know, that this happened. So not easy, but that's what, like we all say in this business, that's what we're paid the big bucks to do, is to find a way to try to communicate that. So I genuinely, sincerely wish you well. It's a big, tough, you know, topic that's out there, but the communication is not where it should be, and to build the kind of trust that we really need in this state. One other final thing that I would say is, probably the thing that gets most communicated from our ag commissioner, from your office, when we talk to them, is this reference to relative rank. Relative to other counties, we're better. Relative to other counties, we have more regulations. And when you go to the Olympics, I mean, if I say to you, somebody was the worst runner in the race, it means nothing if you don't put it into relative, you know? So if other people aren't doing this, California's task, and our task, and when parents come to us from the schools, they're not asking us to be better than how they do it in Texas or someplace else. They are asking us to do it the way we do it in California, and that is, as your agency represents, your leaders. So do it as great leaders in terms of doing that. And relative rank is not a great way to build confidence, so. I appreciate being able to say that. I was, quite frankly, looking forward to hearing all eight answers real clear, and I would say, congratulations, you're earning that trust. I still have some ways to go in terms of that, but you've convinced me certainly of your intentions, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
My comments suggest that every time it rains, we get an ocean monitoring report, and it usually means that there's pollutants in the ocean every time it rains. It's what happens. Pollution all ends up in our waterways, ends up at the ocean. It's pretty obvious what happens. We in Ventura County have the most schoolchildren next to ag land than any other place in the state of California. And I know, back in the day, there was DDT, you know, farmers don't want to use that, farmers don't want to use anything that's carcinogenic either. That is a problem that we have, that this is potentially carcinogenic. I thanked Mr. Jones very much that if he did play a role in the reduction of the amount of pounds, you know, talking about hundreds of thousands of pounds, that to me is something simple and clear that I can understand. We aren't using it as much. You can see the benefit in that. I appreciate COLAB saying that they would support a buffer, something I tried to get forward about 10 years ago, to put in, when a new development comes in next to farmland, let's give that buffer a requirement by law. Right now, it's just a recommendation. So having that, I think, will help. But we no doubt have our schools already there, something, as was mentioned, that we don't have authority to control. They're a state entity, the schools can plop themselves in the middle of farmland, and they have, and they are continuing to try to do so further. But what we can do is not give up the fight and say, therefore build houses all over, everywhere around schools, because then we won't have that problem with the ag urban interface. I think what we can do is say, how can we live in that situation? How can we try to avoid both the exposure of children, the... How can we try to avoid both the exposure of children, the amount of pesticides that we are using? We can do this, and I would hope that we can work together towards that, because, as I say, we're all doing it. We all want to support good health of our community, of our workers, of our crops, and I think we can do that without, you know, giving up and saying, you know, we need to go ahead and develop the farmlands. And I also think that we have shown that we can reduce the amount of pesticides near schools, and I hope that that will be a trend that we will see. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. I appreciate you coming in, and also having the workshops with various groups over the last couple of weeks. I was able to attend one of those and felt it was very informative. And as we started down this road, and certainly you've agreed, that the vacuum that's created when there isn't communication and information and transparency creates its own pictures that may be either based on misinformation, wrong facts, fear, and unfortunately, that then becomes the mountain to climb to really get up to the clear air again, to really understand what the real issues are. And I appreciate DPR making comments that you're going to be, you're continuing the work on looking at how to have an industry that is healthy, because the industry wishes to be healthy, they... We do feed the nation in this, from this state, and we need to honor that always and respect that. I think out of this last month's weeks, that our Ag Commissioner has stepped up, and I appreciate that he's been participating in these workshops, and hearing from the community also, and hearing from the board members, and I'll look to the Ag Commissioner, because as you've said, a lot of what occurs here really does... Responsibility of his office and the job that they are tasked to do, so I think our job is to work closely with the Ag Commissioner to make sure if there's a communication piece missing, he's able to help us to get that information, and the public also to get that. Supervisor, as far as the schools, I think if we wish to support the comment made by the director, we should put it on our legislative platform, because I fully agree, we should not be putting schools in the middle of ag land. Obviously, the Rio Mesa one was done 50 years ago, different time, different everything, but we should have it on our legislative platform, and we should then work however we need to, to make that happen.
And work with the school district, I think it's important.
Because that's how that happens, because the school districts will exercise their sovereignty. They've done it, and it's unfortunate, and it has, today still creates heartache. And I think the other things, as far as, you know, the farmers who do the heavy lifting out there, I, too, had the opportunity to, well, more than once, but to really see the operational side of the house with the farmers, and that's where the improvements are made, that's where the buffers occur, that's where the community needs to look to, and the farmers have been very responsive, and to be able to address, as Bobby Jones has, his coexistence next to Rio Mesa High School all these decades, and to look at operations, operational practices where you do things when school is out, and you work with the operational side of the house. It's very important to continue to do that. So, there are many things that can create a safer, better environment for all of us in this county, and it's all of the above. So, appreciate your being here today, all of you, for your testimony and your concerns and the participation the last couple of weeks. So, that's the end of the open discussion, and we have a receive and file action.
Move the receive and file.
And a second.
There's a motion and a second. And let's vote on that receive and file. Everybody vote, one more vote. That concludes our agenda for today, and we're not back in session now till the 6th of July. Have a wonderful 4th, and a happy Father's Day to all you fathers, all you papas, and happy 4th of July, all you papas.